Please remain standing for a moment of silence. A number of troops have brought their families here at home. And also for two of Delmar residents, one who passed away, John Panethen. He was a beach bed checker on 10th Avenue for 29 years. And also a somewhat regular at the meetings lately, Charlie Bull. He's been in the hospital since Saturday in intensive care. So please keep them both in your thoughts. Thank you. We have a special resignation for Pastor Grace, who's not here just yet. So when she does get here, we will come out and do a little bit of that. But right now, we have a special presentation from the Delmar Lake Como St. Patrick's Day Parade Chairman, Chuck Cal. And his son Liam is here as well.
On behalf of the parade committee, for all the support, for all the years from the borough of Delmar, we made up this plaque, and it says, "Presented to the borough of Delmar in grateful recognition for the 40 years of your support and teamwork needed to make the Delmar Lake Como St. Patrick's Day Parade a success every year. Thank you from the Delmar Lake Como St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee, 2013." Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to give Paul your help.
Jim, you want to say anything?
No, I'm good. I'll answer a few words.
And you're working on this year's parade, okay, I understand?
Yeah, starting.
Thank you very much. Next, we have some proclamations. We'll start off with the councilman being.
Thank you, Mayor. Development Disabilities Month, whereas intellectual and developmental disabilities are conditions which protect more than 7 million Americans and their families. Whereas public awareness and education enhance a community's understanding of the issues affecting people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Whereas people with intellectual and developmental disabilities can be vital and vibrant members of our communities, improving the quality of life for all of us. Whereas the month of March has been designated Development Disabilities Month by the state of New Jersey with 20 chapters of the ARC undertaking public awareness, educational, and fundraising initiatives. Whereas the ARC of Monmouth serves over 1,400 individuals with intellectual disabilities throughout Monmouth County and advocates for, I'm sorry, advocates for and with people with intellectual and developmental disabilities and their families. Whereas the ARC of Monmouth is celebrating 64 years of service to families and individuals throughout Monmouth County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the borough of Delmar would hereby proclaim March 2013 as Developmental Disabilities Month in the borough of Delmar. The county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey, urges that the citizens of Delmar, New Jersey, give full support through efforts towards enabling people with intellectual and developmental disabilities to live full and productive lives of inclusion in our communities.
I have proclamation by American Council for the Irish-American Heritage Month. Whereas throughout American history, millions of Irish immigrants have traveled to the United States of America in search of freedom, justice, and opportunity. And whereas fleeing religious, social, and political discrimination, as well as starvation and disease, these immigrants depended on the strong spirit and character of their Irish heritage to succeed in a new land. And whereas Americans of Irish descent have played a vital role in shaping our history and culture, exploring our frontiers, and fortifying our democracy through their military and public service. And whereas organizations such as the Ancient Order of Hibernians and the Friendly Sons of Shalale, to name a few, have allowed Irish-Americans to gather with each other and honor their Irish heritage. And whereas Irish-American Heritage Month celebrates the contributions of these talented and industrious people and recognizes their rich legacy. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the borough of Delmar do hereby proclaim March 2013 as Irish-American Heritage Month in the borough of Delmar, county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey, and urge the citizens of Delmar to celebrate the contributions of Irish Americans.
Press, thank you, Council President.
Proclamation by the mayor and council. Resolution designating the month of March as Women's History Month. Whereas New Jersey women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our state in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas New Jersey women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and special role in every sphere of life of the state by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Whereas New Jersey women have played a unique role throughout the history of the state by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the state. Whereas New Jersey women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our state. Whereas New Jersey women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Whereas New Jersey women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Whereas the Department of Community Affairs, specifically the Division on Women's Goals, are to remember and celebrate New Jersey women and to ensure that New Jersey women are offered equal opportunities in education, the workforce, and healthcare regardless of age, sexual orientation, income, ethnicity, race, or religion. Identify, implement, measure, and coordinate programs that address the needs of New Jersey women. Engage in continuous study and research on issues affecting New Jersey women and their families. Develop policy papers and legislative recommendations. Now therefore, be it resolved by the governing body in the borough of Delmar, state of New Jersey, that March 2013 is designated as Women's History Month under the National Women History Project's 2013 theme. Our history is our strength. Go women!
Thank you, Council President.
My pleasure.
Next is our workshop. We have a few different items on the workshop. The first is going to be a presentation by Burzall Engineering. Bring us up to speed as to where progress is on our boardwalk. We do have a change order on this evening, so we're going to discuss that and ask Scott McFadden to come. In the presentation, we'll also introduce the other members of Burzall Engineering that are with him today.
Yes, my name is Scott McFadden. I'm Chief Administrative Officer for Burzall Services Group. With me tonight are three individuals from our Infrastructure and Public Services Division. President Jim Crierola, Senior Vice President Rich Maloney, Vice President Paul Calabrese. Paul does the bulk of the work for the borough of Delmar and most of the work on the boardwalk. And we're going to do a presentation tonight to get people up to date on where we are. What status the boardwalk is and answer any questions the council may have. You people in Delmar probably as much as anyone have seen the wrath of Sandy and are on the road to recovery. We're here today to talk about Delmar's road to recovery. And in particular, the boardwalk project, which I'm pleased to say is on time and on budget. The first, it was the first major recovery project in the state of New Jersey to get out to bid and to get under construction. We had a nice ribbon cutting, government were groundbreaking. The governor was here to recognize it, which will be back for the ribbon cutting because we're going to be the first project done too. We secured it by getting out quickly. One of the keys to this was to get out quickly, to get the materials and the labor and the prices locked in quickly, because as everyone knows, supply of the law of supply and demand. The prices for the materials and the availability of the manpower to do this type of work has gotten to the point where now just about a three-month wait and about a 20% escalation in the cost of the materials. So we were able to get in at a good price and get quickly out, out to construction. The status right now, and I'm going to touch on that a little, and then keep up with my little form here. So let me get there. I'm not going to read everything here to you, but what this is, is a boardwalk status. And we'll leave this, and if anybody wants to look at it later, you're welcome to. Just want to touch on some of the things. We talked about the piles, the girders, the decking, the street ramps, the beachside ramps, the conduit, which is the subject of discussion later on, and things that we are out to bid on. And the key here is that the details on the project and the progress that we've made has allowed us again to be ahead of schedule, to get this thing done by our target date. We're now out to bid for the required sewer utilities, the electrical work that needs to be done with the project, the concrete ramps from the Department of Public Works beach access, the boardwalk railings for the ramps and stairs, and the concrete landings at the boardwalk entrances. This is a budget status report. The original estimate was for $16,935,000. We got a great bid on the boardwalk aspect of it in the first bid that we went out on. What we have here is the original estimate and the status and estimated budgets. We're still estimated, and we haven't received bids yet. And the actual costs for the things that we have received bids were the subject of the change order this evening. But we're still under budget, and I think that's key here. And it's still lower than the next lowest bid for the boardwalk project, even with the change order. So this board here details that work. Change order basically was due to unforeseen circumstances that couldn't have been anticipated when the specs were being written. We got out in the field, we still didn't have the survey of the boardwalk, the debris hadn't been, or the beach rather, the debris hadn't been all removed. Once all debris was removed, we had an update survey, and construction was underway. Our people realized that it would be either a catastrophic, almost delay in the project to stop and go back out to bid at that point for the conduit, or to present a change order to the council for their consideration to keep the project going, to keep it moving, make the best of the best prices, and to get it done on time. So that's what we're looking at here. Again, the change order is tonight is for the deck and support revisions, the beach access ramp revisions, the optical conduit, and light bulb foundations. Again, those items had to be addressed at this point in time so that we didn't delay the project needlessly and not hit the target date. The key here is that the structural integrity of the boardwalk is going to be much better than the boardwalk that unfortunately was destroyed and better than the one that was originally anticipated to be constructed as its replacement because as the work progressed, they realized that additional supports were needed for the final design. And Rich Maloney can address some of the structural aspects of that if people have any questions about that part. This is a board with the change order itself, which is the subject of the consideration for the council this evening. And it details all of the items that needed to be addressed. It comes in at 12.64%, which the state guidelines, in fact, the state law precludes change orders in excess of 20%. We're well within that number. And again, I wanted to stress, it was good to be the first out there. The material labor costs escalated since Epic's bid was awarded by at least 20% on all of the bids that we've looked at in any of the towns that have been awarded since. I don't want to mention them because I don't want to feel bad. And again, even with the change order, this project is still coming in at a lower cost than the next lowest bid for the original specifications and the original bid that was put out. So again, to reiterate, Delmar's boardwalk project is still on time, still on budget.
Thank you. Could Rich address the structural improvements?
Yes. When the boardwalk first went out to design, at the bid, I mean, it went out in conjunction with the seawall. And the largest forces in the boardwalk are the hydrodynamic and the wave forces from the ocean. So trying to put together a cost factor design for the borough, the fact that that sheathing was in front of the bulkhead, in front of the boardwalk, was a key part in the design of the boardwalk. The sheathing would take a portion of those loads from the ocean. When we came to realize months or so later that the seawall potentially might not be built, we realized that now the boardwalk was fully exposed to direct strikes from the ocean. So the hydrodynamic and wave forces directly in the boardwalk would increase.
Let me just interrupt, just so the council fully understands. When we were going to put up this engineered dune system, we were trying to build it as part of the boardwalk, that is part of that project. FEMA did not accept that. They said that while they agree it's a good project, it actually forms under a form of hazard mitigation. Hazard mitigation is completely different. There wouldn't be funding for it, but you have to get on the list and compete against other projects. So it's still something we're pursuing, but right now, you know, we weren't given the go-ahead by, we weren't given the blessing by FEMA like with the boardwalk, to move forward with it. And that's why we're not moving forward with the engineered system analysis. So let's the council know that.
Yes, so with the boardwalk without the seawall, the ocean has the ability to go right through the boardwalk, underneath the boardwalk, and actually blow up through the boardwalk. So the original design needed to be strengthened to address those kind of increased forces that the original bid did not consider because they considered the seawall was part of the system. And that's really the driving force behind the additional straps that were added, the bolts, the additional stringers. That additional uplift force had to be distributed and tied down.
Could you also address the ramps, or someone else address the ramps?
Paul, just to touch on one thing with Rich, and he doesn't like it because I always do this, but Rich is the one who does the foundations for all of the rides at Great Adventure. So if you've got a Great Adventure, you're safe because Rich designed all the foundations. He knows what he's doing. When he talks about structure, he's somebody that has people's lives in their hands every day.
Can someone address the ramps?
Paul.
When we went out to bid on the boardwalk, the ramps were intended to go perpendicular off the boardwalk. The old ramps had done that previously. The new ramps that were in the bid included, had to be constructed per ADA guidelines, which is a 12% slope, which is a much less slope than you previously had. When we went out to bid, we did not have the ability, we did not know what the survey was of the sand. We did not know how much sand was left. A lot of sand was lost from the storm. There's a lot of debris, and there's a lot of piles of sand, and a survey was not available at the time of the bid. Once contracts were awarded, we completed the survey, and it became very apparent that the ramps that we had in the bid would have had to be extended by at least twice as long, if not more. Extending them twice as long, just on a dollar-for-dollar basis, would have been twice the cost right off the bat at a minimum. We also realized that these ramps would extend very far onto the beach, and you know, they would have gotten damaged in much smaller storms than Sandy because they're at a elevation and they're more susceptible to the wave action. So a decision was made to, you know, modify the ramps to make them closer to the boardwalk. We incorporated a switchback system, and we believed, or that the switchback was a good design, but we believed that a lot of people wouldn't like to go down a switchback to get down to the beach. So we also then added steps at each entrance. So now the entrances have stairs and a switchback ramp down to the beach. And that did add extra additional structural support.
And that's at every entrance?
That is at every entrance.
That's at every entrance.
And switchback, just so you know, goes down, turns.
And that is, that was how the ramps came to be.
All right, because one of the things I remember in the previous design too was the placement of the showers. There was no way to access the showers if you were disabled because if you went up and down a ramp, you couldn't get to the showers.
That's correct.
Whereas the current design, you would be able to access them.
That's correct.
Again, it's at every entrance.
Don't be showers at every entrance.
We did provide some narrative to the council too, so that goes along with this. If they have questions, they have to, and if we're not here to work on later on.
Now regarding change orders in general, how common are change orders on either private or public projects that you work on? Burzall's pretty good.
Yeah, we work on municipal projects and Aladdin County projects all throughout the state. They're fairly common, and almost every construction type of project that you come into, you encounter something that you couldn't reasonably anticipate and usually have to have some type of change order. But particularly on a project of this magnitude, dealing with the type of devastation that you're recovering from, and the magnitude of the project that's being built for $16, $17 million estimated project, again, was coming in still under the 20% change order regulations. I want to say it happens all the time, it happens most of the time, fairly normal occurrence.
Now, it had been reported, and obviously some residents in town aren't thinking about it, they were concerned, that this change order, which pretty much exposed about a million four all of a sudden done, was purely for aesthetics. Can you address that concern?
I will open up, but I'll let Rich address it more. I would just say this, from a, I'm not an engineer. I was an administrator my, most of my life. And I would put it that that was a beneficial byproduct of the additional structural integrity that was built into the project as Rich described earlier. It does look nice, but I would like Rich to describe.
Yeah, no, that's correct. The correct assumption is, I mean, I'm now the structural chief engineer on the project. And I guess what did drive it, what I explained before, with the boardwalk now being more exposed in the ocean. The forces increased on the structure. We had to increase the strength of the structure to address those forces. The change in the decking and material and pattern are just a byproduct of this additional stringers and straps that were added to the job.
All right, so just so that myself and the rest of the community council know, this change order is not for aesthetic reasons.
Correct. We could have changed the deck pattern and just shuffled around the stringers that we originally had in the project. That would have been fine if we still had the seawall there.
I understand.
But we had a spacing on the string that we weren't comfortable with, now we're directly exposed to the water coming up through the boardwalk. So that's the driving force behind the additional straps, bolts, and stringers.
So you're saying the hurrying bone design has no effect on the extra increased cost of the boardwalk?
It doesn't impact the reason why we had the stringers bolted and straps. I believe there's some additional cost in there for additional cuts, I believe, but it didn't impact the structure. We could have picked the stringers we had and shuffled them around to pick up the herringbone.
So the parallel versus the hurrying bone is six of one after the other?
Yes, exactly. Just would have shuffled the stringers where they needed to be.
And just to confirm, the original way the ramps were going to be were straight down the way they used to be, but because of the percentage of grade they had to be, they would literally extend to the ocean.
That's correct.
So now we're doing a zigzag type pattern, which costs more money as far as materials, the way it's structured, have access to the showers.
Right, there's more and more numbers required to create that pattern because we're all signing the stairs.
Okay, thank you.
Also going back to your Delmar Boardwalk Budget and Status Report, I think the comments. Today's Asbury Park Press has a headline that says, "No bidding on boardwalk project." I'm sure my friends are concerned about that as well. But can you confirm that that's not accurate, that this project was bid, and that there are parts that are already bid, parts were requiring things off state contract, and then also change orders for, you know, the things that they...
Having spent many years in public life, I would say that, I would bet the reporter would say he's not responsible for any of that. But that's what they used to say, and it's probably true. Most of the project was bid. In fact, all of it was bid, or is out to bid, except for the few items on the change order that were a result of unforeseen circumstances that couldn't have been reasonably anticipated when the specifications were being written.
But those change orders are being performed by or under the Epic Construction, who was awarded the bid.
Yes.
And they're being done, how is the, how is the cost determined? Is on a unit basis, on a volume basis, on a square footage, on, how do they determine the cost?
The Epic gives me a, or gives us a cost estimate for a price, a bid price for these extras, for these extra costs. And then we review them, we bring them back to our office, and then we negotiate the numbers. If we deem them to be not fair, based on all our past experience from our many years of construction.
Okay, so you gauge their estimates against other estimates?
Other estimates, yeah.
Other estimates or other jobs that are underway or have recently been bid.
What paper is that? Is that the Asbury Park Press?
Yes, sir. So yeah, that's an extremely misleading headline.
I think one of the keys is to keep in mind too, that if we had been waited till now to get out, the base bids would have probably been more than the numbers we're talking about with the change order based on all the other jobs that we've seen go out to bid for boardwalks other places. And frankly, not as structurally sound, shall we say, we don't think at least, is the one that you're going to have.
You mentioned a material increase of 20%?
The ones that we've looked at.
Yeah, I believe the labor increases were 20% from what we talked about, the materials. I, just to slide again real quick, I know I put it in there. I think it was 12% on the...
Material's about 12.
Yeah.
Labor about 20, but three-month wait.
Thank you.
So it would be more expensive and a longer wait time for the same materials than we were in price call.
I mean, it was, it was great for Delmar to be the first one out there. I mean, first of all, it's good, you know, it's good to be first, it's good to be first. But it was great to get out in the market, to get the best price possible, to secure the materials immediately. It's really a credit to all of you that you were able to get out there in the market. Frankly, we're proud to be a part of it and that we were able to work on it and get out there first.
Are you saying other towns are paying more now?
Other towns are paying more.
Because?
They waited. Because it's later. Not that they waited necessarily, it's just that it took longer for them to get out into the field. You got out there first, you got the best price.
I have a question. Sure. On December 12th, when we voted on the boardwalk, they also had, the bid had the seawall in it. And I remember the mayor saying that it was separate funds, we might not get it, 30-day wait. If you don't, if you don't take that contract in 30 days, no avoid. My question is somewhere, we knew the seawall had a 30-day expiration on it. Somewhere between December 12th and let's say now, it somehow went from the seawall to we're changing it to the, we're changing the decking. Can I ask, do you know approximately what date that happened and who made that decision? How did that come about? How did we say, hey, there isn't more seawall, we're now doing it this way?
I think the seawall, my understanding is, and I wasn't enough from the beginning, the seawall, and we're going to continue to pursue funding through grant funding to construct the seawall because it's still a good idea. But in order to keep the project moving and to get to hit the target date, it was decided to make the...
Right there, right there, it was decided. How did that happen?
I would have to be guilty.
Did you, did you come to us, did we come to you, did you wake up in the middle of the night and say, oh my goodness? What happened?
Well, in our discussions with FEMA, as I mentioned, we were advocating that the engineered dune system, you can't say seawall, freaks people out. The engineered dune system, we were trying to advocate as part of the boardwalk project. FEMA disagreed. While they thought it was a worthwhile project, they said that it fell under hazard mitigation. So it was at that point which...
We knew that on December 12th when we voted on it. I'm just wondering what changed, what happened after that? Like after the seawall, we decided not doing that. When did that take place? When did that change happen? Approximately date, maybe a month? January, February?
Well, we were pursuing the funding for the seawall.
Okay, but she said 30 days, we knew, no avoid, not going to happen.
Well, the 30 days, the 30 days was from a contractor. So Epic said, look, you know, because we told them, we're advocating this one else will happen. He said, all right, well, we'll give you a price for it, we'll hold out price for 30 days.
So that's, so we've all decided whoever, that the seawall is not going to work. Who came forward and said, look, the seawall's not working, we need to change the herringbone design? How did that come about?
Well, we didn't look to change the herringbone design. We looked to strengthen and improve the boardwalk.
Okay, right there. We, like, how did that, did you call, the mayor, the mayor called you, the FEMA called you? How did this happen?
We took it upon ourselves, said we, to develop a stronger boardwalk.
Is after, approximate date? January, February?
I may, we've been meeting weekly with FEMA on the rebuild project throughout January and February. I think this decision to buy for key came in early February.
Oh, on early February. Early, no, actually, because the change order bid was in January, for epic, so it could have been February.
Probably sometime in the center.
Okay, which would fit. I'm just, once, you guys changed the side to the herringbone, I'm just wondering, who initiated that? Who said, we need to do this? That's all I'm asking. Did you just come to us? Or, you're asking who?
You're asking who decided on the herringbone?
Sure, like, I'm guessing you guys come up with it, somebody figured out that FEMA's not going to cover it, even though we kind of do it on December twelfth?
I think the advisory committee, that first, the third Thursday in January, asked if we wanted parallel, or if we liked the herringbone design.
So Birdsall presented to the boardwalk advisory committee on, in January, the third?
No, that's the way I remember it, you know, we're an advisory, we did make that decision, but I think, what he's saying is, it does not change the cost, parallel. So I think probably the advisory committee probably recommended, okay, this is the way we want to go.
Okay, I'm just, I'm not arguing though, I'm just trying to get the thought pattern now. Who is the boardwalk advisory committee?
Me.
Okay, I didn't know that, who's on?
I'm on, I'm on.
That's the beach committee.
We're on a boardwalk committee as well.
How do you guys meet? None of them is on?
There's nine people on the committee.
Well, that's the, oh, that's the beachfront development committee, right, the boardwalk advisory committee?
Right.
The same thing?
No.
Two different ones.
Okay, well, who's on the boardwalk advisory committee?
There's the beachfront committee that Councilman Brian McGovern had. And they were asked, their first meeting was the third?
Third Thursday.
Thursday in January, to give us their opinion on the lights. And also at that time, Birdsall asked them, hey, what do you think about this design? Since we have this print from the boardwalk anyway, we could put this design in without any problem. And they said, alright, that looks good.
So the boardwalk advisory committee, it's the same as the beachfront development committee? It says in the paper, I'm just reading some paper.
I completely assume you're making reference to in late November, in December, we had a group of stakeholders that we convened a few times. Some Representative Dikey, some members from the Arts Council, some members from the Environmental Coalition, some members from the beachfront staff that we brought together to discuss early concept items.
Voted on that?
A very informal committee that we got together and kicked to a conclusion.
So this is in January? Or January? I haven't heard of this, I'm just wondering what it is.
We also met a lot of relief centers going on too, yes.
It was in November, December.
November, December.
It was in a, it was a...
Prior to formation. We also, we discussed lighting, we discussed the boardwalk in general terms. So there was input from us as well, but I think the references now to the other...
Alright, but Paul stated in the paper that in later January, he met with the boardwalk advisory committee, is that correct, Paul?
There was another meeting in January as well.
Who did you meet with? With who was here?
Brian's...
That was, it's semantics here. He met with the committee that I was running.
So the beachfront development committee?
Okay.
Okay, and in that, you presented this change order, and what did they say to you? They said, go forward, they said, wait, what'd they, what'd they say to you?
Go. We presented the plan, we presented where we're at, we presented our progress, we presented what's the bid.
And they told you, we're not going to seawall, we're now doing this, correct? I mean, that's what the question was. Who got rid of the seawall and said, we're now doing the herringbone design on the edge? So you brought to the committee, and that committee decided?
Just to make sure, it has nothing to do with the design, the herringbone, it has to do with the structure, the forcing, the joists, the straps, just so I can understand.
That is correct, and the, and the original bid had a herringbone pattern on it.
Somebody made a decision in there, I'm just trying to figure out who made the decision. Hey, seawall's out, herringbone design's in, and then somebody told you to go forward with that, correct? To start getting plans here, the mayor, someone told you to make plans for this? Who? Was it the advisory committee, if it was?
No, no, all they did, all they did was they presented it with options for lights. They presented it with options for that. The engineers decide how the boardwalk's built. They came back, they told Colleen and me, this is how we're going to build it, because we told them that FEMA will not allow us to do the dune system as part of the boardwalk. So we said, okay, move on.
Okay, so they told you guys, we're not going to seawall, start, you guys come back and say, hey, we have to do this change order, or we have to restructure this because of that, is that, is that accurate? Okay, so then after they started, after you started putting it together, who decided, look, let's just keep giving it to Epic? Or who, did the engineers decide to just stay with the same vendor?
No, they were a little better on the project, so it's the change order on the existing contract.
Even though there's additional work, let's say the conduits and stuff?
Right.
Okay, and after, who decided then to, who gave the authorization to proceed to start doing the work?
The engineer on the job.
Paul, was it you?
Thanks on, well, when you're out in the field and the job is going on, and you realize that was going to happen, yeah.
Okay, so Paul, you told them, go forward?
That's what we did, yes.
Did you talk to anybody from the borough, or from the council or anybody? I mean, did you get authorization from the town?
Was it a consultation?
Well...
What, what do you mean?
With who?
They're the engineer of the project, so when they come, they tell us, hey, listen, we need this structure in this boardwalk, because we're not going to put the dunes in them. That's what you do.
Okay, but who, somebody told them to start work, I'm just trying to figure out who it was.
Ultimately, we as a council bid, and we appointed the engineer.
So then why have a change order?
The change order isn't for the engineer, the change order is for the construction company.
Listen, there's work already starting to be done on this. Herringbone design's out there, conduit laid, somebody gave an authorization to proceed, I'm just wondering who.
I see, alright, let me give you this an out, let's say...
I don't want an analogy, I want an answer.
Well, I'll give you an answer. Birdsall engineer is the engineer for the town, they designed the boardwalk. Then they manage the construction of the boardwalk, there's construction methods. When they see something that needs to be changed, they are authorized by, being chosen by us as the town engineers and the manager of the project, to make those changes. This happens, you know, with, you know, back here, with our paving. That happened on Route thirty-five with, well, that wasn't you, that's somebody else. But it happens, what's that?
We have another change order, change order on this evening.
Right, for the ramp. So Birdsall is the engineer, the manager, and they make those field calls every day?
So you all the time tell companies with million dollar change orders, just go ahead and do it?
Once the decision was made not to install the engineered dune system, certain, that triggered other terms that needed to be made.
And that decision was made by the, by McGovern's group, correct? That was the decision?
No, the design was decided, we, they were asked, you want parallel or you want herringbone? I said, herringbone.
Herringbone was huge in drawing.
If it was a solid board, we would have said, parallel.
That wasn't what it was, technically, technically, the contract is working at risk until a governing body approves it.
So right now, we don't have to pay Epic for the work, I mean, but what contractor would do that? Who would just start working?
Everyone I've ever encountered in thirty years in public business.
So let's bid no, and they're stuck with it? I'm just saying, if...
And they'll stop the job and...
If the contract, you couldn't just go ahead with million dollar changes on a six million dollar job? Without even paying from the engine, I mean, Paul, did you give them the okay?
They couldn't stop.
Did you give them the okay, Paul?
Yeah.
Yes, you gave them okay, you said, hey, go forward, I'll take responsibility for this.
Well, what you said, what you're doing is working in good faith on behalf of the municipality.
Thank you, Paul, if that's what you did, okay. That, that's what I wanted to know, who authorized the go forward to start the work before the council, mayor even voting?
That's, that's pretty standard procedure though, correct? That's what I'm getting through you, but standard procedure to make a judgment?
It's not unusual, unfortunately, to say standard, and it's not unusual to have on a construction project, particularly one of your...
And I just want to clarify that we did vote, that's why we chose you as our engineering firm for this job. So it's not anything new, anything different? No. Okay. It's not standard, but it's, it happens. And more, more, more often than not?
On a construction project, this is not... It's going to happen again.
And can you say it again? Herringbone versus parallel, there's no difference, real difference in the cost?
There are additional, you know, costs in the cuts of the boards, but it did not change, that wasn't the reason.
It didn't change it by a million dollars.
No, correct.
I think another important point is that this change order is for additional work that Epic is doing. It's not, it's not any type of cost override, where they bid the project out, and now all of a sudden, they have to hire more people, or they can't get the materials for the price they said, and they need more money. Can you confirm that as well?
Yes, and then one of the things I've said a few times, and we continue to stress is, even with the change order, there's still the low, the next lowest bid for the original job without the change order, by over a million dollars, which is substantial, and also back into the decision-making process.
So it's basically extending the job that they did?
It changed, changed some of the requirements, based on the conditions in the field, which could have been anticipated at the time we went out to bid.
Any other questions for our Birdsall friends?
So we're on our timeframe beautifully, is that correct?
Yes, and so far, we look like underbuys on Epic.
Well, I was down there today, and the third half pretty much completed with the decking, and they're moving pretty quickly.
The bottom line is, other towns, or towns that just start to go out to bid, will be ready probably before anyone. And it wasn't a rush, I don't think, given the information that you had today, the prices were good, we were at a good spot. You advised us accordingly. Change order happens all times, because you really don't know what you're dealing with till you get in there, which seems to be the case with many building projects. I'm no expert, but that would be my guess. So I'm very pleased that we'll probably be the only boardwalk running come November. And I think that says a lot for our council, for our workers, for you people, and I'm very pleased about that.
Well, one thing before you leave, we can talk about the boardwalk lights. We had picked out a previous design, and there seemed to be overwhelming hatred. I guess you could say.
Who's we?
With lots of very pointed remarks. So we are going to go back to the older style. So this is the one, it's not exactly the same as the last one, but it'll look very similar to that. So it's going to go back to the old design. So if you like the old design, that's great, and...
Mr. Mayor, can I just explain that our development group, which is an advisory group, advised the council that we were going to go with that style light that no one liked? I did recommend to Colleen, before we order it, let's send a notice out to the people that live along Ocean Avenue, and see what they say. And we listen to you, okay? So those nine people on the development advisory committee, you know, were flexible. We realized that what we chose was not going to be well liked, so we're back, you know? It's not necessarily going to be blue, because we don't think the blue is going to go well with the dark wood, because the other tracks of the old boardwalk was like gray. So I think we're going to go with a darker color, a charcoal color, or something, not, not the blue.
But as we, as we go out for these, we're very confident that these lights will be delivered and installed in time for November.
We are going to come very close, I've been guaranteed six to eight weeks for delivery, I'm hoping it's more like six. And then we just got to keep on being hopeful when we get our bid back in the electric, that's tomorrow, for the electric bid. Hopefully we get a good bidder that knows the dates, he has, obviously, the dates that are in that bid are that he needs to complete it by this date.
Well, will these be LED lights?
These will be LED lights.
Will be savings?
Will be savings, there'll be a big cost savings there, about fifty percent cost savings for the old lights. And also the lights will also be aluminum. As you know, the old lights were the galvanized steel. Aluminum holds up to the weather better, because as we know, we had the issue with some of the paint peel and some of the rust. These lights will hold up much better to that.
And what color will the lights be? In other words, white light or...
It'll be a white light, which is why we do like this.
Paul, a quick question, think way back, when we gave the initial presentation, you had stated that one part of the boardwalk on eighteen Sav survived, and I believe you said it was because it had hurricane straps on it, was that correct?
That's correct.
Were you saying that none, nothing else on the boardwalk had any hurricane straps on? Or were they different types or anything?
The, the old boardwalk? Yes, the old boardwalk did not have hurricane straps.
Okay, I had the eyes on DPW tell me different, I didn't know if you knew that or not. I, you know, I, I don't know any, yes or no, I just, people tell me that, I just wanted to get your input since I had you here.
Okay, it was my understanding that the previous boardwalk was constructed in pieces over time, and that updating happened over time. Some sections did have hurricane straps, but maybe attached to silver piles. Others had the longer piles and hurricane straps. And as we all know, we've talked a couple of times now, there was a couple of failures that happened with the old design in the circuit and the source, someone had to do too few or not enough, or no hurricane straps on sections. Other sections had short piles or other construction issues.
Can we take questions from the public? Do we want to do that?
Uh, not in our workshop, no.
I just have a question, we changed from the IP, or IP, or...
Yes.
E rank, however to say it, to the tracks, how much savings was involved there?
It was a seven hundred sixty-six thousand dollar savings.
Who, who made that decision? Who changed? Say, we did, who's we? I did, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you, appreciate your work. Again, thank you for having me, sir.
One more important part to go, you guys have, not nice of you, but, you know, one of the things we always budgeted for in our push was about three hundred thousand dollars a year or more for repairs to the boardwalk, because the boardwalk was, was old and beat up and put together in the seventies, eighties, nineties. You know, DPW did it, great group of men, but they're not boardwalkers. So we continually had to upgrade that. Because we have a new boardwalk, we're not going to need that, that three hundred thousand dollar a year budget for repairs and improvements. So we're going to use that for the debt service. So the nice thing is, even with all the change orders and everything else, we still will not be required to increase the each bed prices at all, this comes summer. And again, this all gets paid, so there are no tax dollars that are going to act as... Alright, next, we'll do a... Next on our workshop is funding ordinances that are on...
Sure, I'd like to introduce two of our professionals, Matt Jessup is our bond counsel, and Tom Bellman is our municipal auditor. We have for your consideration this evening two funding ordinances that have their first reading on tonight's agenda long-term resolution. The intent of these is to essentially clean up some of the prior working and funding conversations that we brought to council. To date, two and a half million dollars has been authorized by council to address hurricane and sanding related expenses incurred all through the general fund. I'm going to let these gentlemen, who are much better than me at explaining the intricacies of these funding ordinances, explain how they're different. But this is essentially an opportunity for us to roll these into longer term financing mechanisms. For the, for, while we are waiting FEMA funding. So gentlemen, do you want to...
Sure, thank you, Colleen. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, my name is Matt Jessup, I'm the man of the town, your bound counsel. The two ordinances you have before you tonight, taken together, accomplish two things. First, two million dollars in emergency appropriation that this council adopted late last year, and five hundred thousand temporary emergency appropriation that the council adopted early this year, rolls them into an ordinance that effectively allows a longer term financing of those costs. A lot of those costs are capital, and as a result, as you do with most capital projects, those capital projects will be funded longer term. Some of the other items are not capital, but they are extraordinary costs as a result of the hurricane, and municipalities in that circumstance, with the blessing of the local finance board, have been encouraged to finance those costs over a longer term period. The alternative is to take that two and a half million dollars and put it into this year's budget. In fact, by law, if not for these bond ordinances, that's exactly what happens. So the primary driver of these two bond ordinances is effectively to replace the emergency appropriation for two million done last year, and the five hundred thousand temporary emergency appropriation done this year, and convert them into bond ordinances that can be funded over the useful life of the assets. The ordinances together also authorize an additional million dollars in capital costs in connection with the ongoing recovery of the building effort as a result of the hurricane. These two ordinances, for separate reasons under the law... These two ordinances, for separate reasons under the law, will require the approval of the local finance board, which is the state oversight committee down in Trenton. So you also have before you a resolution that authorizes an application to the local finance board. That application would be submitted next Wednesday, which is the applicable deadline for the April meeting, the board meets once a month. That meeting would be May 10th, or excuse me, April 10th. And with favorable approvals from the local finance board, these two ordinances could be considered for second reading, public hearing, and final adoption. Based on the circumstances of the borough, based on the capital costs and the non-capital costs that are in these two ordinances, and based on other municipalities that have been before the board and are ongoing conversations with the board generally, we would anticipate favorable approval by April 10th.
As such, because we need to go to the local finance board for their approval, the timing of the second reading is a little bit, we used to usually come back to you at the next meeting. For second reading, you come on it. But because the local finance board does not meet until April 10th, it will come back to you on April 17th for second reading, comment, and that's pretty good.
I have a question about the board bond rating.
Sure.
I voted for the bond, but I'm trying to nail it right here, just, I totally got downgraded with our bond rating. Is it true, and did other towns, like I hit with this hurricane, is that something normal?
Well, councilman, you did not actually, the borough was not downgraded. The borough actually maintained its rating, but a negative outlook was added. So you're still at the, in each level, there are three levels of ratings. You stayed at the same rating level, you just had a negative outlook added, which means the rating agency wants to see how you manage the next six months and year in the recovery effort, and then they will turn around and move the negative outlook, or you know, they could downgrade you, but as of right now, there has been no downgrade to the rating. I think what we have seen, because the borough has been out in the marketplace all of December and just this past month, the rates that the borough has had are just incredibly remarkable.
Can you talk about them a little bit?
I can, Mayor.
Did other towns get a negative outlook right there? I'm just, are we normal?
I don't represent some of the other shore-based municipalities, so I don't, I can't say specifically whether, whether they have been either downgraded or had a negative outlook added. Again, what I can say is that the rates that the borough has received have been outstanding, have been comparable, if not better, than other communities impacted or not impacted by the storm. You received basically below 1% interest rate on your notes in December, which I believe were 0.85 yield, and your notes just recently sold a few weeks ago, 0.75 yield. So from December to February, March, in fact, you have saved an additional 10 basis points in yield. So the borough's credit, notwithstanding what a credit agency may say, the borough's credit in the marketplace is clearly solid, significant, and improving based on the rate.
Thank you. Any questions for the bond counsel?
No, I think that's great news though.
Yeah, the rates are phenomenal.
Absolutely, yep.
You have any to add?
Sure, good evening, I'm Tom Fallon, it's me, Tom Fallon and Larson. And pretty much, I would be reiterating a lot of what Matt said. I think it's very important to adopt these ordinances. Without adopting these ordinances, negatively impact the borough's 2013 budget, which would be required under the budget law to raise about $2.5 million in that budget. And the law allows us to refund the ordinances into a bond ordinance, which certainly is a proper.
Any questions for Tom Fallon or? All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, we have a special resolution for Pastor Grace, who came in after we started. So Pastor Grace, would you like to come on front?
Whereas the Cavalier Baptist Church on 13th Ave has been integral member of the Belmar community for over one every year, providing support services to residents and community at large. And whereas Pastor Grace and Cavalier Baptist Church colleagues have been extremely proactive in their support for and advocacy of the whole of the Belmar community, and whereas in the wake of Hurricane Sandy, Pastor Grace and Cavalier Baptist Church worked diligently and in partnership with the Borough of Belmar to provide relief aid to residents impacted by the storm, opening their doors to all who needed food, ice, clothing, and supplies. Whereas in the days, weeks, and months of Hurricane Sandy, Pastor Grace and the Cavalier Baptist Church opened their doors to community groups and support meetings who lost their meeting space because of the storm. Over 30 AA meetings a week have found a new home at Cavalier Baptist Church, ensuring that these much-needed community supports continue despite the destruction from Hurricane Sandy. And whereas the Borough of Belmar recognizes Pastor Grace and Cavalier Baptist Church for their passionate dedication to and support of the Belmar community, now therefore be resolved, the mayor and council of the Borough of Belmar hereby extend on behalf of all Belmar residents, the deepest of gratitude to Pastor Grace and Cavalier Baptist Church for their extraordinary actions taken in the wake of Hurricane Sandy.
Pastor Grace's church is on a mountain evidently.
We found out after the storm that we do indeed sit on the highest point in Belmar. The ancestors who built that church were very wise. Some of their descendants are sitting in the audience tonight. Thank you for this. I can't tell you what this means. I'm at a really, I'm at a point right now where this just means a whole lot that we're being thanked. And I have to actually give this to my congregation and to my trustees and my deacons, who just, when I came and said, for just such a moment as this, we have been spared major damage, and they threw open the doors and threw open their hearts. This is really, for them, much more than it is for me. We would like to also do a presentation to the Borough of Belmar by a board project. This is our $500 donation.
Pastor Grace is also the re-elected, or not re-elected, elected Pope.
Oh, yeah. I don't think so. I don't think with this Pope that's gonna happen. We're still very happy for our Catholic brothers and sisters and very pleased with his election, so God bless you.
Any petitions for the mayor council to pick on the workshop? Oh, sorry, workshop, the Sid. They presented their, or they had their budget on back in January, they pulled it and they have it.
So it expires with the charter? Does it expire for charter? Is it still ongoing currently?
It's still an ongoing thing right now. They have to come before the council for the budget.
Does it expire? Will they never come up with another budget?
I don't know. Uh, no petitions, okay. Next, reports of mayor and council.
How about I go first?
That'd be wonderful, Councilman.
Okay. First, I'd like to congratulate our police and Department of Public Works and our tourism for the St. Patrick's Parade. It was a great parade. Chip Kavanaugh was here earlier, I guess he's left, but did a great job. And Jerry Lynch, whom we all know, I think he sang as well this year as he's ever sang, you know, and he's sung for all 40 years. He's terrific. A little embarrassed right now, this is my 10th report. I started back when I was recreation director, but it is the season of the goose. You'll notice that the Canada geese are starting to pair up, which means they're looking for a spot to nest. Silver Lake Island, where they've traditionally gone, is now empty. So you people that live around Silver Lake, especially the places that are still, the people aren't living there, the geese may go and make a nest there. And if they do, and the goslings hatch, we're gonna have 10 or 12 more years of geese around Silver Lake. And I've been attacking them for 10 years. And we're down to, last year there were just three nests, around the first year of 25. So if you see a nest around Silver Lake, and I have a feeling, Mr. Mayor, they may be going over to inlet tourist area. If you see them, don't destroy the nest, don't chase them. They will make a nest, they will lay eggs. If you break an egg, they'll lay another one. If you destroy the nest, they'll go to another place and make the nest again. We have a method approved by PETA, where after she starts to incubate the nest, I'll go around with corn oil and oil the eggs, and then she'll sit on that nest until she goes out of season, the goslings won't hatch, and therefore we kind of reduce the population that way. But you need to let me know if there is a nest, and it's gonna happen within the next, before our next meeting, in the next two weeks, you gotta start to nest. I was out on Silver Lake Island with Dorsey Lazzar over the weekend, we took a soil test, we had it sampled out at the county, and it came back that the soil will not support trees or shrubs for this year. They do recommend that we plant native grasses until the fertility of the soil improves. So that's what we're probably gonna go and follow their recommendation. So you, I was hoping we could get some trees and shrubs out there, but in all likelihood, they will die. So we'll wait and do it in a gradual process as the growing seasons improve. That's my report. Mayor?
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the ADA meeting on February 28th, the committee decided to support Neil Scheck's suggestion of considering accessibility costs in reconstructing reimbursements. Ramps and elevators would be part of this consideration. Tax relief and other such means of exemptions could be explored. So the ADA of Belmar towards that stance. Also, the committee is planning a caregivers workshop on Thursday, May 16th, at the Belmar Library, beginning at 7:00 PM. Family Resources Network has been contacted to be part of the event. The Harbor Commission meeting on Monday, March 4th was a good meeting, and we discussed the installation of a new security system, which is long overdue at the marina. The borough will be investigating systems appropriate for our harbor while keeping a watchful eye on cost factors. Installation of electrical power is a work in progress, with equipment being delivered during the week of March 22nd. Work on restoring the conference station is underway as well. The 9th Avenue pier will open on April 1st, power has been installed there. The lower level of our library is now open for use and looks beautiful. We're still waiting for the elevator, we're all else is in place in that room. We thank the library staff always for their constant efforts in meeting the needs of our community with various programming. Also, I'd like to reiterate what Councilman McGovern has said. Thank you, DPW and police staff for the excellent job for the work before, during, and after the St. Patrick's Day parade. And I just can't commend you enough. Rode around town the day of the parade, I didn't see any litter, it was all done, and I saw the police out in force during the day of the parade, so I appreciate that very much as well. For women of our town, please remember the Mayor's Wellness Campaign and Belmar Care's Women's Health Expo to be held on March 30th, beginning at 1:00 PM in the Borough Gym. I thank Colleen and Ray Claudio for sending out a press release about the event. Later on that same day, our Circle of Friends high desk is hosting a dance for disabled teens and young adults with the help of our social services director, Kelly Williams, and also our tourism director, Mary Brabason. The dance will also be held in the gym. That was a wonderful, wonderful project that we had last year for our disabled youngsters. They really enjoyed it, and this is the first dance that we're holding after the storm.
Mayor, what did I say?
Both of my, both of the events are March 30th. Thank you. The Women's Health Expo was early that day, and the dance I think starts at 6:00. I wanted to say how much I enjoyed reading to the pre- paid classes at Belmar School for Dr. Seuss's birthday, Reader Across America program. It's great being back in the school. This is very exciting news for me. Belmar's Mayor's Wellness Campaign, which I chair, received a mini grant from the State's Mayor's Wellness Campaign Office, which are participating in the Wall Food Town Supermarket Sweep in March of last year. We passed out fruit kebabs and other healthy snacks to emphasize the importance of healthy eating. So I'm very, very happy that we have some money. Also, what I have is some information that I received from Assemblyman Sean Kane's office. I was exploring tax assistance, free tax preparation assistance for our residents, and I got an update about the New Jersey Division of Taxation will be holding a free tax assistance event. I'm sure, sorry this is short notice, but I just got the email late this afternoon. So the free tax assistance event will be on Thursday, tomorrow, March 14th, at the Bradley Beach Library, to help individuals and business owners prepare their 2012 tax returns. So I think that's good information for you, if anyone needs help, go and find out if you can get help, and I think that's a good thing. Also, I have a list of events that was handed to me by Colleen Connolly, just an update of the different events happening in the borough. 3:14, that's tomorrow, at 6 o'clock, basketball awards in the gym. 3:14 at 6:30, Turnstile Community Meeting on Cleary Park. 3:16 at 10:00 in the morning, elevation workshop here in the courtroom. 3:21, next week, 11:00 AM, St. Patrick's Day Senior Luncheon at Connolly Station. Thank you again to Kelly and Mary Brabason. 3:25 at noon, Business Meeting at Connolly Station, my health expo on the 30th, and the Circle of Friends Dance on the 30th. And also, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to just tell you, as I was walking home from the parade, I met, I'd left the parade and went home, I didn't stay for the rest of it, kinda weary. I heard so many nice compliments about our borough and about the mayor and you, and the good work that you're doing, and I don't solicit, I don't say, what do you think of our mayor, what do you think of me? But it's unsolicited praise of your leadership, and I just have to keep saying that, because honestly, I keep hearing it. I want to share that with you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. On October 11th, 2012, we had a Belmar Police Department Community Policing Meeting here. Basically, what it does is it assigns an officer to every street in Belmar. With the bars opening up early, I sent a reminder out to all the police officers on the list, and I want to let the taxpayers know that every street in Belmar has an officer assigned to them. And what this is supposed to do is if there's an emergency, of course you call 911, but if there is a house or a neighbor or something happening that you don't feel comfortable with, you could reach out to this one particular officer. And then, let's say, two weeks later it happens again, and you call down there, you're not gonna get a different officer and a different officer, and all that information isn't brought together. So what this is doing is actually letting all the information go with a particular officer for each particular street, so that we can... officer for each particular street so that we can get good results to quell any upset people during the summer. We're trying to put a little bit early and make sure everybody has a good summer. I have that list. I'm sure the captain has the list. And to reach out to me, I'll be more than happy to get any groups together with their officer or get their officers together with their group. I think this will really work. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman B.
Yeah, I do want to state that I also was honored to walk in the St. Patrick's Day Parade. I thought it was a great day, and I was in Connolly Station, and around two hours into the parade, I noticed the street sweeper going by, and it was just amazing, the quick cleanup. So thank you very much. I also had the honor of reading to the third grade class. Our mayor's daughter is in wanting question me on a few things, but I read about, read Dr. Seuss's book about Dink Doofert, which is a town where they were telling a lot of the children that lived in the town that they could live somewhere else. And much to my surprise, I read three classes, and they all said that they would never live anywhere else, especially Dink Doofert, which is great, other than Belmar. So kudos to mayor, council, and our residents. It was a great thing to hear from our children. I want to congratulate Mary Pat Wallace, she's the nurse at our Belmar Elementary School. My daughter's in second grade, and her favorite class is nurse. She goes to nurse quite often. She was the Education Services Professional of the Year, and she absolutely deserved that. So that's Mary Pat Wallace. The school also had their second walk to school day, which is great. The children are dropped down by Main Street, where teachers greet them, meet them, and they walk to school, and it's promoting their school health council. So they just had one about a week ago. The school's also working on their community garden, which is a project to refurbish and create garden beds for the area. If you have any questions, please contact Liz Cole at the school. And we're also doing a meeting on Belmar Strong Beach Celebration. It's where we're going to have the children in the area participate in a day, an afternoon at the beach, lunch, music, to promote the opening of our boardwalk. It's having a date right now, is May 22nd. I also want to congratulate DPW again for their amazing work with the parade. Some past things that they've done over the past couple of weeks is they've bred 3,700 water meters. They did flushing of the hydrants. They cleaned up after approximately sixty, I heard the number might have been 80,000 people. I'm not too sure of the numbers. If anybody counted, please let us know. They did 41 truckloads of sand onto our beach, which each one is 25 tons. That's a lot of sand. A lot of big castles coming up. And the sand reimbursement is refundable by FEMA, which is great to know. They also helped with our marastur that we had and also the Celtic Chase. Onto the BPP, the Belmar Business Partnership. They've been working with a QR code, which are little scan codes that keep you up to date on the different businesses in town, specials that they have. They guide you to our website. They're working on all the different promotional activities, the Belmar VIP card, which gets you discounts in our different programs within the town, which is very useful, and I encourage everybody to get their Belmar VIP card. Please continue to shop Belmar. I know that we talk about that often around Christmas time, but I think it's great. I find myself waking up, I go to dry cleaners, I go to Rite Aid, I go to Belmar Bagel, a little too much. I eat in town, I shop in town. I think it's really important to do that as a resident. Also, just want to say, as Aunt Claire said, it's all compliments. I know we've got a lot of grief and feedback and questions about the gift cards, questions about the boardwalk, questions about the change orders, et cetera, but I continue to hear from people about the spirit and the morale and the way the town's improving and how it looks and how excited they are about the season, and I can't say how proud I am to be a resident, to be mayor and to be council.
Thank you, Council.
You're welcome.
And I also want to say kudos to our police and DPW. Managing a large crowd like that on parade day is not easy, and I was outside of Connolly Station watching these streets. It's nice to see five of the street sweepers all over town. Kind of gives everyone the impression that it's time to go home and also that it cleans up nicely. Gosh, we have a whole lot of stuff, so I'm gonna try to be brief, but I'm not going to. Our buy a board campaign is over $500,000. And the extra $500 from Pastor Grace, I think. Our beach badge sales are up year-to-date 47% over last year, which is an indication that people are coming to Belmar this summer. I think about it, we're up 47%. We're still rebuilding the boardwalk. Our beach is a disaster zone right now, and we're up almost 50% of where we were last year. And to give you an idea, last year was the second highest grossing revenue year at the beachfront. So financially, our beachfront looks like it's been in really good shape. It looks like we're gonna be very busy this year, which will be a nice thing for our businesses. Regarding our grants that we gave out, to date, we've given out $266,000 in grants to 62 different families. Now, some of those families, thank God, are back in their home. Some are still not. Some are gonna be back in April, some May, some not after the sun. So, you know, I think someone made a comment last meeting that there is no emergency in town. Talk to these families, and believe me, there's an emergency in town. Also, regarding keeping the names confidential, I made an error the last time I talked about this, after consulting with Mike Dupont, our borough attorney. The names are gonna be completely confidential. One of the things I mentioned was that we would allow the press to come in, take a look at them. We can't do that. That's prohibited as well. And we have had people, both walk-ins and letters, to Kelly Williams, asking that their names not be given. These are folks similar to what Council President Dyke talked about at our last meeting, who needed the money, received it, but certainly do not want to have their names disclosed. But I will give you an idea as to some of the items that this grant money went to pay for. For one client, we were able to pay their mortgage and get them current. They were behind in payments due to the storm. One of them, we were able to make a college payment, tuition that hadn't been paid since the storm. Another one, we were able to pay off their credit card that they had to use to buy their furniture and appliances. Another one, we were able to give them the deposit needed to start the flooring on their And here's an interesting one, and this is, I think, something we see a lot of, and that's, you know, one generation taking care of their parents, the old generation. We were able to pay for one month's rent at an assisted living center for someone's mom who was displaced from the storm as well. So it's going to some really, you know, it's going to people who need it, people whose lives are still in a state of emergency. We have a waiting list. Waiting list right now is approximately 16 families. We estimate that we need about $80,000 for those 16 families. So by the end of this week, I'm gonna try to come up with another campaign to help those families. Again, some of these folks are still displaced from their home. So it's a lot of money to raise, but we're gonna try to figure out how we do that for our residents. These are our brothers and sisters who live amongst us. Couple of weeks ago, we mentioned that we have a new Recreation Director. Well, we have another new Recreation Director. That Recreation Director was a relatively young guy, and he got a job somewhere else paying him more money. You know, we don't pay a lot for the Recreation Director, so it's not easy to hold on to him. So we have another Recreation Director, Ray Claudio, and we'll get notice out about him, his phone number, and how to get in touch with him as well. But I think it's gonna be possibly an ongoing problem because of how much we pay the Recreation Director. Hopefully, this one stays for a while in Conolly Stadium. Also, I want to give a very public thank you to Governor Chris Christie. When he came for our first pilot driving back on January 9th, him and I met with the owner of La Dolce Vita and 10th Avenue Burrito about extending their seasonal liquor licenses so that they could start, typically they can only start in May 1, they were looking to start in March 1. And at that time, standing with him, shaking his hand, he said, all right, I'll do it. I'll get you an executive order. The executive order came February 28th at about like 6:00 PM, but it didn't come. And I gotta say, he's been so good to our community. He's the man of his word, and we look forward to having him here, even after Memorial Day, when we have our groundbreaking. But the three bars that that impacts are La Dolce Vita, 10th Avenue Burrito, and also DJ's, which was open for the first time ever on parade day. Lastly, our next meeting. Because of the storm, we had to cancel last Wednesday to have it for today, so we could put anyone in jeopardy, and everyone could come to the meeting with a lot of them. So we're gonna push our next meeting, which is scheduled for the 20th, back to the 27th. So we have the meeting today, the 13th. The next meeting will be in two weeks, 14 days. After that, we'll get back on our regular schedule of the first and third Wednesdays of the month, starting in April. Part of the reason why we do this is the ordinances that we're introducing today for first reading, they can't be acted upon for second reading for at least 10 calendar days. So if we kept next week's meeting, we would be left on anyway until April 1st. So in an effort to expedite that a bit, we're gonna have a meeting on the 27th of March, to make sure that that gets noticed accordingly. And everyone knows that the pilings are all done. We already mentioned that. Another thing, this is more of an interest for folks who live 12th, 13th, 14th, 15th Avenue. The water main there that was in terrible shape has been replaced, and we've also gone out to bid for the sewer and road repair. We'll be awarding that tonight. Lowest bidder was JADS from South River. That project cost came in at $582,000. And if you've driven on 13th Avenue, you know it's, you need a four-wheel drive to get down there. So it's important that we finish that project with the sewer and tater. That's all for me, for my report.
I have a question. Colleen and Mr. Mayor, you might know this too. Do we have any of our residents housed at Fort Monmouth? I know they were all in Countywide, the people just... To your knowledge, do we have anybody there? Because I was driving through there the other day, and I wonder if we have any of our residents here.
We only know our residents' locations by self-disclosure. People will not share that with us. We have asked that question about Fort Monmouth and not gotten the answer. I don't believe anybody comes self-disclosed that they are there.
Okay, Phil. I just wondered, because it was an opportunity for those who had no place, and I know it was Countywide, so our chances probably were minimal, but I was hoping that, you know, they could help, that that agency could help us.
And if I can add one more thing from my report. The government of all these people came out with the anticipated guidelines for the distribution of the community development block grant money. The important part for our residents is money both for small businesses and also $600 million allocated for residents, with grant money of up to $150,000 to make improvements to your home, to repair them, and also to elevate them, depending where you live, if your house needs to be elevated. We're gonna have that information, once we get it finalized, on our website. We'll broadcast it, but please, take advantage of this. This is, you know, a great program and an opportunity to be able to fix up your home with grant money, or I'm still applying for the SBA loans, and go through that, go through FEMA. But these are some serious dollars that could really go a long way to help our residents. So that's all for me. Next on our agenda is I need Council President to ask for motion on the minutes.
Yes. I move that the minutes of the regular meeting held on February 20th, 2013, the approved was recorded, and a copy thereof be posted on the borough's website.
Second?
Councilwoman Decker?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next is our resolution calendar. I'm gonna open this up to public session. Any comments, questions for the mayor and council? I'm just the resolution panel.
This would include the boardwalk changes? Strengthening of the boardwalk. The change order, would this be the appropriate time for questions about the change order to strengthen the boardwalk?
Yes.
When they gave us the bid for, you know, four and a half million for the seawall and then six and a half million for the boardwalk, they didn't say that if we didn't build the seawall, we would have to strengthen the boardwalk, right?
Who's that?
I guess...
Because Epic's the one that bid, but Epic doesn't have anything to do with it.
Okay, well, Birdsall didn't say that without the seawall, that the boardwalk was gonna have to be changed, right?
At the time of bidding?
At the time that they made the plans. They didn't say, the boardwalk can be like this if you have the seawall, but if you don't have the seawall, then it's gotta be another way. Because, you know, I saw the presentation where they showed, what was it, 18th Avenue that survived? 19th? Which section survived the storm was still there? 19th Avenue. And the understanding is, hey, look, this one survived because we built it this way. Now we're gonna build a whole boardwalk this way, so the whole boardwalk will survive. But that's the design, like the design for 19th Avenue that survived, that was the original plan for the boardwalk that Epic bid 6.6 billion on, right?
Correct.
So why are we being told now that, oh, without the seawall, we need to strengthen it, or the ocean's gonna knock it down? That section of boardwalk on 19th Avenue survived this hundred-year storm, right?
Hopefully, it's 100 years ago, yes.
Oh, I hope so too, yeah. But don't you see that we were already told that the boardwalk built this way would survive the storm, and we were showed the evidence that the 19th Avenue boardwalk did indeed survive the storm? So why are we being told now that, oh, no, it won't survive because you're not building the seawall? And that we gotta change it?
They never said it wouldn't survive. They never said that. But what they did state is that, you know, again, they're the engineers, they're the ones designing, building this, that without that engineered dune, it's recommended to strengthen the boardwalk.
Well, there's less sand, right? There's less sand now?
We're not gonna talk out.
I'm sorry.
So it's strengthening the boardwalk, so...
But it just seems to me it's not necessary because the 19th Avenue boardwalk survived that horrible storm, so why are we being told now that we have to have another million and a half dollars worth of structural improvements because we're not putting up a seawall?
But I understand you don't think it's necessary. Our engineers do.
No, this is what they told us.
Right, and when they went out to bid, and that's why we awarded the dune structure, engineered dunes with it, but we gave them no, we didn't give them notice to proceed, and so we knew we were gonna have the financing. Since we don't have the financing in place yet, this is what Birdsall is recommending we do. And they're the engineers, they're the ones managing it, and we're gonna trust them.
It just doesn't, it sounds like I'm being told something different than we were told when the original plans for the boardwalk were presented. We were told that boardwalk built this way would survive a storm like the one we saw, and now we're being told, oh, well, since you're not building...
Dave, that 19th Avenue section was built about 10 years ago.
Right.
And we are using that concept. But I think in that 10 years, I think when the engineers looked at it, maybe we can do it a little bit better than we did 10 years ago, and that's the difference. But they're rebuilding it the same way as, basically the same way as that 19th Avenue section.
We were just told that we needed to have it strengthened because we weren't gonna have a seawall. We were just told that, just now.
And you're absolutely right, but you disagree with them, and I completely understand that, but we're gonna go with...
No, they never said that. That design was okay, that it was only contingent on having a seawall. They said that this'll survive the storm. They showed 19th Avenue. They said we're gonna build a whole boardwalk this way. They never said, oh, yeah, but if you don't build a boardwalk, it's gonna cost another couple million dollars, right?
Oh, you mean if you didn't build the dunes, but...
Oh, the seawall, yeah.
But it was all part of the same project. You understand that?
But the 19th Avenue, the 19th Avenue boardwalk didn't have a seawall.
I understand that, and my councilman governor said it was built 10 years ago. This is gonna be a... This is gonna be a, a stronger boardwalk than what was there before. This is gonna be a stronger boardwalk than what was at 19th Avenue that survived sand.
Okay, so do we need a, a boardwalk that's gonna survive a 200-year storm? You know, we're not gonna be here 200 years from now.
You look pretty good.
I don't think I'm gonna make it, you know, I smoke, you know? So, but, uh, you know, like, you know, this is our money we're talking about. We have priorities too, you know? Of course I want a strong boardwalk, but, you know, state taxes going up, federal taxes going up. You've been to the supermarket, food is going up, gas is going up. You know, we have, our paycheck's aren't going up, you know? So we, we have priorities, you know, we have to, want money for our families. We care about the boardwalk, but I just wanna say we care about our families more, you know? That's all, thank you.
Brendan Reed, 109th Avenue. Yeah, my question is concerning the, uh, with the, with the change order. What's the, what's the change order? Would that mean, do we need, do we still need a seawall?
Well, you know, ideally, we would still wanna put it in, uh, because it protects the boardwalk, but also the homes on Ocean Avenue and any home, closed Ocean Avenue, uh, from the, the strength and the severity of a, of a storm surge. So we're still gonna pursue it, but again, we, we, I don't believe it's prudent to move forward unless we have the funding mechanism in place, um, because it's, it's too expensive for us to do on our own.
So, and, and that's great, you know, I think that seawall makes a lot of sense and I'm glad to hear that, uh, you know, FEMA saying, you know, it's something good idea, we, we need to get it from a different funding envelope. Uh, question then, with the, uh, change order, to what level of protection will the boardwalk now, uh, provide? It'll be under your storm, what type of level of protection has, has Birdsall set?
Uh, the only thing that they'll really commit to is, cause people say, you know, what about a category three or category four hurricane? But that's depending on winds. Our, our issue is storm surge, so it could be a nor'easter, it could be a tropical storm. Uh, it just depends on tides, um, so, you know, it'll be, it'll be built to withstand something like Sandy. Could we get a worse storm than Sandy? I don't know, that's just our luck though, right? Um, but they're gonna build it in, in a way that the residents of Bellmar, um, can feel very comfortable that we're gonna have one very well-built professional boardwalk that's built nice.
And combine that with a seawall, we're, we're gonna be in really great shape. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I can see back 110 Second Avenue. Meeting Mayor and Council. Is, uh, I wanna ask a question of all of you, and I'd like to ask it individually.
Uh, ask it through the chair.
Uh, Madari? Actually, you actually speak for, and, and people can consent with your answer. Is everybody in favor of transparency?
Tell me how this relates to our, uh, our, uh, resolution calendar.
How it relates to our resolution calendar? I've read, uh, several articles by the Asbury Park Press regarding the change order. And, uh, according to Paul Calabrese, an engineer with Birdsall, he's represented, he's met with the Boardwalk Advisory Committee. As a taxpayer, I'm not even aware of any such entity or what authority it has to engage our engineering firm. Now I find out that Councilman McGovern's group is the Boardwalk Advisory Committee. And I would like to know why Councilman McGovern has not updated the taxpayers regarding the nature of these meetings and, and even share that information with the council?
Well, it's, it's, uh, I mean, we talked about,
Can Councilman McGovern answer that question, Madari?
Uh, it's, it's been advertised several times. People from the public have commented. But it's, it's, it's an advisory board, uh, it's an ad hoc committee. It doesn't make decisions, it just gives recommendations. Ultimately, the decisions that are made are, are, are by me as the mayor. You know, but I, we thought the, the committee would be a good, a good format for public input as we move forward on this, on this boardwalk, which is very important. And also, I think that, uh, Mr. Calabrese simply misspoke as to what the name of the committee was. Uh, but I will tell you that there are no tax dollars that go into the committee. It's purely voluntary.
Okay. Councilman McGovern?
True, yeah.
Can you tell me what, um, what, what transpired at this meeting? Who was there and was, was it publicly advertised and was then, did the public attend?
Well, do we, do we have minutes for it?
Yes.
We can supply with minutes.
I, I've submitted a note request for that very, uh, information.
150 minutes.
Uh, Councilman McGovern, based on this meeting, did you share any of the topics discussed? Cause according to call Paul Calabrese, none of the costs were, were discussed with the committee and the committee gave the go-ahead to go, you know, to go ahead.
At the last meeting, and it was a three-hour meeting, so I, I don't wanna spend all this time explaining it. I'll just do a quick synopsis of it. Uh, we listened to what the architect had in mind for the three pavilions.
But I'm talking about the change order for the boardwalk.
Change order for the boardwalk was the first meeting back in January. I thought you were asking about this last meeting.
No.
The whole committee was asked.
I'm speaking to Councilman McGovern, Madari. I'd like to hear his answer.
You speak through the chair.
Oh, boy.
Speak through the chair. So they don't, they, I mean, the ultimate decision is, is, is the mayor's, you know? So the advisory board, um,
Comes to the council. After our meeting, I go and I talk to the mayor and, uh, the administrator and say, "What happened at the meeting?" And which, you know, what do we like? We like parallel or do we like herringbone? We said herringbone.
Well, herringbone was part of the original plans, Councilman McGovern.
What's that?
Herringbone was part of the original plans, the herringbone pattern.
And we agreed to it.
Did you share that information with any of the council members? I'm just, cause I, I think that this whole body needs to be more transparent and this information needs to be, all of this change order information should be on the website. All of a sudden, a lot of documents showed up on the website after the Ashbrook controversy. And now I see we're back to state contracts. And I'm just curious that what, what effort does it take to put this stuff up and advise people of what's going on? And I also would like to know from Councilman McGovern, what effort he made to update the rest of his council members?
The rest of the council, well, I went to the administrator and when she, uh, I spoke to her, uh, minutes in the meeting were available.
So does somebody have to, so would another council member have to open request those minutes in the meeting or to find out what's going on?
No.
Why can't they, can it be emailed back?
Why can't the council member just say, "Brian, what, what went on at the meeting? What did you guys, what did you guys talk about?" I say, "Hey, they, uh, the architect showed us designs and we wanted to go with herringbone."
Okay, when, when did you get this specific change order? When did you get this?
That wasn't a change order. The change order is the engineering, the, the, that's costing a million dollars. I think you heard the gentleman, uh, speak today, that choosing parallel versus herringbone did not cost a million dollars. It, it required some work cutting, but did not improve, uh, decrease the strength of the boardwalk. We're not hiding anything.
I didn't say we was hiding anything. I'm just saying there's a million dollar difference based on something.
And it had nothing,
When did you get the information on the, the change order?
That million dollars had nothing to do with our, uh, advisory committee, the developmental,
Then why would he say in the paper, or he would,
The paper's wrong.
The paper's wrong?
Yeah. Don't you, everything you read in the Asbury Park Press, come on.
But you just said he had a meeting with them. And there's three, there's three hours, actually.
All right, Mr. Decker. Thank you.
But so, so transparency is a dead issue with this group, is that, is that the answer? Thank you.
Have a good night. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Martha Maselko, 102 North Boulevard. And my question has to do, well, I actually have two questions.
This is just on the, uh, the resolution calendar. We have one from the public session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, when you open the public session, I have a question. Okay, I apologize.
No, no worries. Yes, sir.
All right, so I'm, I'm to address you, I'm not to ask anything of the other council people.
You're supposed to say your name and address the record.
I know. I'm asking that first, but it's, uh, Teddy Mann, Oakwood Road, Bellmar.
Right.
Okay. All right, so, uh, I just feel like quoting Tennessee Williamson, like Big Daddy said, "There's so much mendacity."
Is this on the,
Yes, it is. It's about, it's about the change order. Mendacity. Big Daddy. Mendacity. The only truth I've heard tonight was from Paul and I asked him this day, uh, Scott McFadden, I asked him this day. And they assured me they would, so for the record, I did ask them this day. And by the way, uh, April, it's E-H-M-A-N-N.
Uh, sir, what, what do you like to ask or speak about regarding,
All right, I just wanna say that I'm tired of the lies. All right, so I have the, I have the change order here. And this is dated February 28th and it's signed Kathleen Elliott, who's, uh, the Birdsall Service Group Engineer, Project Manager on the job. And it states that for an additional $1,017,54,050, the deck pattern is involved. And it's, I'm, I'm so glad that Paul said the truth tonight. He said the herringbone deck pattern was there from the very beginning. And it was in the original spec, so I'm so glad that he spoke the truth. And I'm so glad he answered Councilman Bean's questions about the, you know? Uh, and I know you can't believe everything that there is in the, in the, in the paper, but I can read New Jersey contract law, folks. And New Jersey contract law says there's, you can't go over 20%. And the papers knew that, that's why they were reporting it. Not just the Asbury Park Press, which you don't like, but the other ones reported it.
I love the other.
Good for you, I hate it. I would never quote them. But the point is,
There's a point in it.
Yes, the point is the 20% increase. In New Jersey contract law, you're not, you can't go above 20% on the original contract. And I, I did email Councilman Nicolay and she deferred to Colin Connolly, didn't answer my email this week, why the original amount of the contract is $11,85,440. And the answer is, according to Colin Connolly, and I understand, is that you added the, um, the beach debris removal. Or no, the, the seawall, I'm sorry. And it's not the seawall, I know, it is the permanent dune.
I'm sure you got a point here, right?
Yeah. It's the 20%, Mayor. The point is the 20%. If you go back to what all of you voted on, it was 6.6, just shy of that, for Epic Construction for the boardwalk. Because you weren't sure about the permanent dune and the other. So the contract really is 6.6 and the paper's got it right. And if you have a 2.5 million dollar increase, that's way over 20%. So no matter what Scott McFadden says, just because the mayor speaks out of his mouth that, "Well, we have 17 million to work with," that's just a budget. That is just an idea, but that's not really what we're working from because the original bid came in at 6.6. That's the contract. And in order to satisfy New Jersey contract law, it can't exceed 20%. So this whole thing's a ruse. And even that whole thing is a ruse because I, I haven't had many times tonight, you know, Scott McFadden was saying, "We're under the 20%." That's a lie. And I'm just here to say on the record for April, for the minutes, cause I'm not gonna argue with you anymore, Mayor, it's a lie.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Anything else, yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, sorry, Tom.
I'd just like to, uh, talk, we're talking about this, uh,
Name and address, Tom.
Uh, Tom Dilberger, 1000 River Road. Change order. Now, every outfit, every GC, I was just coming from too many years of job meetings and listening to this stuff. Every outfit, the GC, that would be Birdsall in this particular case.
Epic.
Epic. But Birdsall has to have a person on the job. This gentleman, Paul, what was it then?
We have a variety, but every time that guy gets working, there's someone from Birdsall there.
Somebody from Birdsall has to be there to put a signature down on a change order. Go ahead, do it. That's, that answers your, your question, uh, Mr. Bean. Somebody has to be there. Now, when that's signed, that, that contractor, that sub, goes ahead and starts his work. Now, now his bill is a fluid situation to be fought out later between Birdsall, Epic, and the sub. Now Epic has subs on the job. So that's a fluid situation. So we don't really know, you're going to get that bill, those bills, later down the line. I just want you to understand that. That's not a done deal. You don't know, nobody knows what that's doing because the, the work is still going on and they're still compiling their material, their labor, and everything else for the change orders. So, uh, you understand that, right? You voted, or I guess you voted for, for these change orders.
Well, it's on for tonight, though.
Say again?
It's on, it's on for tonight for a vote.
Okay, all right. So, but even, even beyond that, the lawyers and everybody else involved is gonna get into this. This is not a done deal. Even when you do vote, it's gonna be months and maybe even more than a year or two before this is all done, a done deal. I just wanted to, Say again?
That was your experience as a contractor?
Oh, guaranteed.
And you saw a lot of change orders over the years?
Every job has change order, uh, change order. Every single job, brand new job, renovation, whatever it is, every single job has change orders all the time. And they are, that's a euphemism, they're cost overruns. That's what they are.
Because there's, there are things that are not anticipated on a specific project, maybe, is that the reason?
They're not anticipated or maybe, maybe, uh, an architect just has an idea come to his head and, and you're on the 20th floor or 25th and his idea is on the 36th floor. So they go ahead and put it in. You get a new, all of a sudden, you get a new set of drawings. Boom, change order. There it is.
Just to make sure that we're not building any 36 story buildings.
That's a bowling alley.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Bill.
That made everything clear.
Bill McKim, 905 Ocean Avenue. I wanna thank you for the change orders because, uh, I'm glad to see that you, that, oh, you really have the courage to do it right. Because it'd be very easy to just tell these guys, just, this is the money we have and you're not gonna fight for it. And it could be a slipshot job that five years from now comes apart on a big storm. Cause right now, we have at least a foot lower beach of sand. And I see, cause my house where I sit, I can basically see the entire beach. I've been there 23 years. I look at the ocean all the time and I can see how much lower it is right now. And we really need a sand replenishment. And the other part of why I'm happy to see that the change order will be there is because the boardwalk that was just done last year went through my basement window and flooded my house. And I just got the unlucky one that got the boards that went through my basement window. Whereas my neighbors on either side of me only got a foot of water with all the water that went into town. But I got seven feet of water and lost everything in my entire downstairs. And I was there for, I'm there 23 years and I never even had a sump pump down there and never worried about water. And I literally, before the storm, carried one or two items out of the basement. Just figuring, well, let me just, if something really was to happen, let me get these out. Now I put them on the riser where you come out of the basement.
I can't hear.
Before you come out of the, the basement, uh, to my first floor. And I had water all the way up to within one foot of my kitchen. Because the boardwalk detached and went through the windows of my basement. So for me, it's an important thing to make sure. And of course, I think also aesthetically, it's important that it's returned to what it was. So I wanna thank you and you could've taken the easy way out and just, uh, not put in these change orders and just let it go as to, uh, what it was gonna be. And I appreciate it, thank you.
I see other questions, comments? Oh, this one.
Hi, Donna Burke, 307 10th Avenue. I have a question about the lighting. Are they gonna do anything with the old lighting?
Uh, the old lighting that we can salvage, uh, we're gonna probably use down at the Marina, um, along the pier that's, um, that was completed, although, uh, beat up pretty good by Sandy, um, down by the, uh, L Street Beach.
Since we're on the Marina, are they doing anything with the building, uh, from, for the Marina? I haven't heard anything at any of the meetings.
Well, remember, we're just talking about, I have another residential council, so you're,
Okay.
You're actually asking a word, sorry.
Okay.
So, we got you.
Thank you.
We will have a public session about this. It gets entertaining. It gets entertaining.
I have a question about the lighting also. I don't know, is it going to follow the same pattern as the boardwalk from north to south, you know? Because I think the gentlemen have left.
Is it going to follow the...
Yeah, is the work on it going to go from north to south?
You mean how it's installed?
Yeah. Like, when will it, like, will it be lit up partially or all at once? Or my concern is that he's...
Kelly can answer that.
What is likely is that decking is going to make progress in two stages. What's been talked about is from first, from the bridge side, north, but there is a second team of decking being applied at 11 headed south. So likely, the lighting will come up again at first and then again at 11, and then march south together.
Okay. The Birdsall people said that it would be close to Memorial Day, the lighting. Is there an alternate plan for lighting to be there before that, especially with the executive order of allowing the bars to be open?
Sure.
Two months ahead of time?
We'll have an alternative in place.
Because we definitely need lighting. There's no doubt.
It's very dark. But the executive order simply allowed them to open March 1st, it's supposed to May 1st.
Right.
May 1st proceeds Memorial Day, so they'd be open up anyway. Lights are no less. But I believe we'll make sure that as well.
Yeah, we need it down there. I mean, I'm sure you're well aware of our situation, and we've already had occurrences, but I'll speak in the coming portion. Okay, thanks.
See, no other comments, questions on the resolution count, we'll make a motion to approve. Is that good? All favor? All right. All right, so let's get to the agenda for the resolutions. First resolution, Colin, I'm okay voting on him. I don't conflict. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution on the Friday, the count of bills.
Second.
Yes.
Let me read you guys a couple things. We have a whole bunch of Hurricane Sandy aid, Phil Payson here, GE Capital, Red Bull Bank, Borough Delmar, let's see, who else? The Gables, that's, I looked it up, that's the most romantic places on the weekend. AT&amp;T Universal Cars, AT&amp;T Products. My point, I'm bringing this up, is it's not that I'm against charity, it's the fact that we're cutting checks in the taxpayer's name, and we're putting on our bill pay. And by me voting on this, I'm saying that I okay every single one of these expenses. And I tell you the truth, how do I know who they're going to? I know who will come and they're going to, but for who? How, I don't understand how I'm supposed to vote without even knowing, I mean, is this, is this somebody in California? I understand that this is a charity aid program, but the problem is that as soon as this borough accepts donations in the taxpayer's name, then it becomes our responsibility to make sure that that money's handed out appropriately. And I cannot see if this money's handed out appropriately by just this list. One more thing. I don't know if these people, what if these people donated to me, you know, my campaign? And I'm, you know, I'm voting in, I just don't know, I don't know how anybody can vote on this, not knowing where this goes. I'm outstanding for this vote.
Yes.
Next resolution is authorizing state contract purchase of park and playground equipment. This is for the four playgrounds off of the beachfront. They were obviously destroyed. Councilman and the governor's going to accuse themselves of this. I'll make a, I'll offer a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
Councilman Beckey?
Yes.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Yes.
For the record, Councilman and the governor abstained. Next is the consent agenda, and I guess we have to have a couple changes on this.
I would make a motion to pull some stuff down as well.
All right, you know, let's do it along the times. Which ones do you want to go after?
Well, one and two, I mean, what?
Well, the first one was the boardwalk lighting, but then we changed it because people absolutely hated it. So we're going to go with the second one, which again is the more important one we had before. So we're going to have to remove the first one.
I have a question on the 13th Avenue improvement of B Street.
Yep. Can I ask it now? Yes, sure. Do we start this work already, or we're approving it in evermore form of the work?
This is still where the contract is.
This is still where the contract is, to proceed with the, with the seed activities of the block.
Let's see. The resolution of the Borough Dollar Account, Department of New Jersey making applications to the local finance board, please explain.
This is with Matt Jessup and Tom Fallon.
Oh, this is the bottom.
This is the little finance board on top.
That's fine, committed. Resolution required permission for the deduction granted by Supercom Stanley. What fundraising is this for?
This is to, I mean, the buy work.
Did you get this from April or from... This is only for the buy work. All this money is only going towards a boardwalk, not to people or to companies, only to the municipality we respect. Boardwalk reconstruction, please pull out for the change, and the other three are fine.
So I'm going to make a, just make sure you're welcoming to this. I'm going to make a motion to remove the first resolution authorizing state contract purchase of a boardwalk lighting, to remove that from the consent agenda and remove it from the resolution calendar altogether. So I'm going to make that motion first. So I'll offer that motion, I guess.
Councilman Beckey?
Yes.
Councilman Denver?
Yes.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Senator?
Yes. Next is a resolution to remove from the consent agenda, but on the resolution calendar, the number seven, yeah, change order number one for the Delmar Boardwalk Reconstruction Project. So I make a motion to remove the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Beckey?
Yes.
Councilman Denver?
Yes.
The problem I have with the change order is not the fact that there's a change order. That's what they keep trying to say and make it look that way. Well, my big problem is that decisions were made to go forward with this and to put $1 million in changes on this, and then I find out about it on a Friday before the Wednesday meeting, and then I go down there and the changes are already done, they're already starting to build it. I am not voting on things that my vote doesn't even count. If they could already authorize to do it, they don't need me. I'm now calling this the Jim Bean Rule, and I'm invoking it. I'm not voting on anything that's, decision's already been made. Jim Bean rules and votes, I am abstaining.
But this is to remove...
Oh, that's all right. Yes.
Yes. So now that that resolution, the consent agenda, I'll...
Hold on.
This is the first one. I only will have the first one.
I want to say a full object, for individual voting.
All right. I'll make a motion to remove the resolution authorizing state contract purchase of the lighting from the consent agenda, which is put on a resolution calendar. I say, I'll make the motion, I'll say.
Councilman Beckey?
Yes.
Councilman Denver?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Picklin?
Yes.
Yes.
On each individual one, I'll make a motion to move and approve resolution, so to NJAC 5030-14.4, change order number one, the Delmar Boardwalk Reconstruction Project.
Second.
Councilman Beckey?
Yes.
Councilman Denver?
Yes.
Councilman Bean?
Jim Bean Rule, abstaining.
Councilman Picklin?
Yes.
Senator?
Yes. Next one is resolution authorizing state contract purchase for the lights of the boardwalk. I'll offer.
Second.
Councilman Beckey?
Yes.
Councilman Doris?
Yes.
Councilman Bean?
I got this at 4:45 today. What happened? At 4:45, I get an email saying, everything's changed, we've got a new contractor. I didn't see the picture of the new lights.
They're the same as the old.
Are they? Hey, see them? I didn't see them. And this new contractor?
Not a contractor, it's a purchase of the state contract.
So this is just to purchase the lights? This isn't to go out to do the work, or is it both? To purchase the lights off of state contract. Okay, yes.
Councilman Picklin?
Yes.
Senator?
Yes, I guess that passed by consent anyway. Next, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Councilman Beckey?
Yes.
Councilman Denver?
Yes.
Councilman Bean?
Yes.
Councilman Picklin?
Yes.
Yes. Next is our ordinance calendar. This is for first reading introduction ordinance, 2013-5. It's bond ordinance providing for the funding of capital portions required for prior emergency appropriations and temporary emergency appropriations for repairs to buildings and restoration as a result of Hurricane Sandy and by the Borough Delmar and County Mammoth, Jersey appropriating $1,640,000 thereof, and authorized issuance of the same amount of bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof. Make a motion to, I'm offering, move for adoption.
Introduction.
Introduction. Second.
Councilman Beckey?
Yes.
Councilman Denver?
Yes.
I went through this very carefully. Out of this $1,640,000, $1,000,000 is not spent yet. We're taking the money out ahead of time, bonded the other, the other monies from the emergency. Just because we bond this money doesn't mean we have to spend it, so the projects are still coming up. So I think go through both these ordinances very, very careful, carefully. I am voting yes.
Councilman Picklin?
Yes.
Senator?
Yes. Next is first reading introduction ordinance, 2013-6, refunding bond ordinance to the Borough Delmar and County Mammoth, providing for the funding of certain portions of previous emergency appropriations and temporary emergency appropriations for emergency needs related to damage caused by Hurricane Sandy appropriating $1,860,000 thereof, and authorizing issuance of the same amount, refunding bonds or notes for financing the cost thereof. So I make a motion to offer and introduce.
Second.
Councilman Beckey?
Yes.
Councilman Denver?
Yes.
Councilman Bean? Yes.
Senator?
Yes. Next is second reading of public hearing. So we'll take a public comment, or questions on this. Ordinance 2013-03, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 35 flood damage prevention of the advisory ordinances of the Borough of Delmar. Is this a public hearing, public comments, questions on this ordinance? Yes, Gene?
Gene Kramer, Fourth Avenue. I'm all in favor of this ordinance. The ordinance would adopt some of the new advisory flood hazard maps that have been put out by FEMA. And actually, I'm all in favor of it, primarily if there could be full disclosure of it. I feel this is important enough that it should be available on the borough's website, perhaps in the construction department part of the website or the zoning officer.
Do we have an electronic copy?
It's attached to the agenda in the meeting minutes section.
Well, I'm saying it's, it's...
There should be, there should...
The map is online.
The map is online.
Online is good. The borough's website, I think, would be much...
No, it's on the borough's website. On the button on the front page, it says print municipal forms and documents, where that the cop is the map, and FAQ on flood allocation.
If you'd like, if you want to give the clerk an email, show an email.
No, I, let me tell you the reason I think this is important, that it be available to everybody, especially real estate agents, okay? This has a profound impact on property matters. And I've already seen advertisements, real estate advertisements here in town, advertising "Serge Safe, Flood Free" in their descriptions of properties and representations to the purchasing public, okay? I think this information...
Someone said a copy and download was flood free?
Absolutely, real estate advertisements. Flood free, and the other one I saw was Serge Safe, okay? I think what's important here is that the public be informed as to where their, the decisions are going to be made here by the zoning officer, as to whether a property is in a flood-prone zone or not, or whether a house has to be razed if it's altered or not, okay? I think it'd be to everybody's benefit that we're all looking at the same maps, okay? And it's not just the FEMA map that more recently came out, the advisory flood hazard map, but this ordinance also had previously adopted the flood insurance rate maps. And those likewise should be available. Everybody's read the newspapers. There's some properties now that it will cost upwards of $31,000 a year to purchase flood insurance for it. I think what we want to make sure is that people that are looking to buy property in Delmar be aware of what they're actually buying into. And actually, I think it's to everybody's benefit to look up their own property to see where they're situated. So we don't have a gentleman over here that has a board come through his window and says, well, gee, I've lived here for 23 years. Well, perhaps if it was indicated on a map that he was in a risky zone, that he would have taken that precaution. I'm all in favor of the ordinance, but I think there should be full disclosure and full availability, preferably just in a PDF format that people can zoom in on.
Thank you. I can surely do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments, questions on this ordinance? See, and I'll close the public portion.
Second.
I will make a motion to offer and move adoption of ordinance 2013-3.
Second.
Councilman Beckey?
Yes.
Councilman Denver?
Yes.
Councilman Bean?
Yes.
Senator?
Yes. That concludes our ordinance calendar. So next up, public session. All right, here's our public session. It's very simple. Raise your hand, wait to get called on. If you shout out, then you're not getting called. Call from the microphone, you have five minutes. You've got whatever topic you like. End of five minutes, you have to stop, and you got to sit down. While someone's speaking, please be respectful and allow them to continue speaking, even if for some bizarre reason you made a zit. Ma'am, I'll tell you first, since I cut you off before.
Sorry.
Stop one.
Okay, I don't think I'll be five minutes, but I'm Martha Miselko. I live at 102 North Boulevard. And I'm coming before you to ask about the drainage pipe in Lake Pomo. There's a lot of concern, you know, residents who live around the lake, about what's being done, and there doesn't seem to be a lot of clarity. Now, I know Delmar doesn't have full control over that, so I was asking, who in Delmar is representing Delmar? And what does the rest of the committee consist of? Because if it's not fixed, as you know, because you have those big pipes going all the time, they can't continue. So we want to know the timeline for when it will be done. And also, so that's one question about that. And the other question is that North Boulevard itself does not continue all the way to Ocean Avenue. And when does that intend to be fixed? And if it's not going to be fixed before the summer, what precautions will be made so people don't keep driving up there when there is no way to get any place, and you have all these people kind of roaming around, and people may not be back in their homes? Just a safety issue, so.
Okay, on the first one, the Southern Mammoth Sewer Thwart, Smurso, is the one who is controlling those pumps. I can tell you, our director, DPW, makes sure that before any storm, they start pumping that lake down. And those pumps are enormous, so they can pump out a tremendous amount of water in a quick amount of time. They are not our pumps, and we do not control them. It's all smurfing. The pipe underground is completely gone. There's no, there's no way for the water in Lake Como to get into the ocean without being pumped. Let me tell you, it's really expensive. We all pay into Smurso, we're all paying. You know, there has been an attempt to form a... Um, you know, there, there has been an, an attempt to form a Lake Como late commission between Lake Como, Belmar and Spring Lake. Um, it, you know, Mayor Ryan of Lake Como is really one who's, who's taken lead on this. Um, it hasn't come to fruition. Um, Smurso is telling us that they are going to repair that pipe underground, but, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Director, there is no timeframe yet for when they're going to repay, repair it.
Not a timeframe or an exact time, not a track yet.
Right.
Still a question of that.
I, I would tell you, one of my fears is, is that we may come to the summer and those pipes may still be there, um, because they, they are not moving.
Yeah, and the stronger fear is that the money will run out and they'll never really fix it properly, correct? I mean...
They'll fix it properly, but it's going to take a while. Until then, those pumps will stay there. Lake Como, one thing I, I can assure you, is Lake Como is not going to flood, uh, your home. It's not going to, because of a flash storm or anything like that, uh, you know, Director Campbell will be out there directing them, um, and he's can be pretty persuasive, uh, to pump that down before and during a storm. Um, but unfortunately, it's, it's, it's something that's out of our control, it's not in our town. Um, the pipe is actually, it's going to, um, running under account of, so we, we advocate for it, believe me, I do personally.
Right.
Um, uh, but I can tell you that they've, for instance, uh, I'm going to run the Spring Lake Five Miler, they have it every year. They've already made, uh, adjustments not to run in front of your house because of the pipe, so they're, they're going to probably be there, my guess is into the summer. Now, as far as the road, you want to speak about the road?
Sure, we are prepared to go out to bid within the next two weeks for the road repair. And it is with that very intention that we will have that done.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So at least I could go on the road.
Right, is there any action, more action, positive action that could be taken by people, uh, to get that drainage pipe done? I mean, in other words, is there any...
I think you can certainly encourage, you can contact Smurso and encourage them to, to finalize, um, the grant application. There are some grant funding sources that they are looking at to fund that solution.
Okay.
So I think our, and all citizens would benefit from reaching out to Smurso and encouraging them to, to find a quick resolution.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, ten people came up here and said that, just like you said, is first we're actually hearing of it, then I'm hearing of it, and I think, uh, the squeaky gear gets the oil.
Right, right, right.
Can I get people to call?
Right, right, yeah, okay. Well, there's a lot of concern, so I'm sure we can get action.
But I will tell you, those pipes will stay there and they'll pump it out until it's fixed, so...
Yeah, but you know, they're so...
They're horrendous.
Horrendous, and the big mounds of sand, you know, I mean, there. It's not a pretty sight, but I, I thank you for all your good work.
Oh, our pleasure, thank you. Chair.
Thank you. Tom Rogers, Clayton Drive, we're also on an operation down the beachfront, as you know. Uh, two questions. One, has there been any decision concerning the trailers with the rents for the season coming up? Haven't seen or heard anything.
We'll have that for next meeting, uh, the twenty-seventh.
Okay, um, kind of looking at a plan, and I'm not sure if this makes sense, that's why I'm going to ask, oh, excuse me. The twenty-ninth of the month, opening up for just weekends, opening half my operation, that would be a Friday. We're actually, we're going to do business Saturdays and Sundays.
When do you want to start doing that?
The twenty-ninth of this month. Now, I'm not sure if that makes sense or not, just for Saturdays and Sundays. I came back from vacation last week and I went down to the beachfront on Sunday afternoon. I got to tell you, there were a few hundred people walking around and people eat every day, sometimes twice. Um, I wonder if that makes sense, because, you know, you're still kind of like a limbo on Oshnavida when it's going to reopen, but I want to try to open in stages and...
Let us, let us talk to you about that, because, um, we're going to hopefully open where they completed the boardwalk by first of fifth, because we can't, you know, we, we, the problem we have are, you know, aren't people going into your business. The problem we have is people going across the street and standing there while some guy's cutting wood and getting in the way. And the contractor calls the police and the police have to send people down there and say, stop standing next to the guy cutting wood. So it's, it's more the golfers and it's, it's...
Will they be working on weekends? Because right now they're not.
They're working on Saturday.
Oh, they did last Saturday?
Yeah.
Okay, I was away on vacation.
Hey, just so you're aware, they did work Saturday and I got three phone calls from the contractor, there were people interfering.
Yeah.
So the bottom line is, doesn't this make sense?
Well, I wouldn't say that yet, because I'd rather have you open than not open, right? But, um, we could talk, we could figure that out. We'll talk with our council or police department.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, yep, sorry, you're up. That's right.
Ms. Brown? Yes, Donald Burke, third Seventeenth Avenue, and my question about the, um, the Marina. What is the footprint? We never really heard anything before.
Um, I believe the, uh, Chefs International will be coming on the twenty-seventh, uh, for a presentation regarding the, the main building where, um, you know, where...
Because that was supposed to start in October, you know, when we had the storm, wasn't it?
No, we, we, um, we always, we always anticipated that starting or negotiating it this year. Uh, the idea, uh, would be that we come to negotiate it, agree with them, um, something where obviously it's good for them, uh, they're looking to invest over six million dollars, uh, but at the same time, we want to make money off it, we want to operate like a business. Um, but, you know, the, the game plan now is for them to start immediately after Labor Day of this year with the anticipation that, well, they're committing, uh, the building would be completed Memorial Day weekend twenty-fourteen.
Okay, also, one other question, the boat that is in Beach River, that Ranger, is, so does anybody know who owns that? Is there...
I think Councilman Ryan McGovern owns that, he sleeps on that.
He's worried about like best if he does.
Yeah, I've spoke to the DOT on several occasions over the last few weeks. Um, it's our responsibility to take it out. Uh, if they take it out, then they pay for the, um, the storage and destroying the boat. If we remove it, then it's our responsibility and we have to hold it for a certain amount of time.
But nobody's been in contact with the owner or...
We have, yeah, several times, so, um, we're, we have the pressure on DOT to even set it up.
Okay.
You know, right now they're working down in Burke Town and hopefully they're going to be able to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Could always use a new police notebook.
I'm not going to have mine there.
Salvage that and we can get a police book.
So...
Just this out. Miss Ma'am.
My name is Ellen Rayme, I live on Eighth Avenue here in Belmar. Excuse me, I just want to, uh, thank Mayor Darty and his committee for the splendid job that they have done since Hurricane Sandy. And for people to say that they're not doing this, that, and the others, do the complaining, just get off your bump and get behind them so they can finish doing what they started, and that's a wonderful job. Because not only do he care about Belmar, the beachfront, the people, he really loves the senior citizens and he do care for us, just like he cares for the little ones. And for people to say that they're not being taken care of and this not being done is deplorable. I just can't understand what's going on here and they need to stop it and just stand behind a good man, because he's a young man and he got young ideas and that's what you need. And he's doing a wonderful job, so we need to stop knocking him down. That's all. Yes.
Bill Strauss, Oak Road. Um, the council takes the ADA seriously, I'm assuming, right? Um, the boardwalk, uh, access used to be stairs going down to the beach and there was no ramp previously, right? Right? But now there's going to be a ramp for the ADA.
There, there was some, for now there's going to be a ramp.
Hold on, Mayor. Um, part of my quest, or my statement here is, is also hearing impaired is part of ADA, is that right? Hearing impaired? All right, what I'm trying to say is... What, what I'm trying to say is, these guys, I couldn't hear a word they were saying and I can't hear anything any of you say, okay? Because I have some slight hearing problem. So I'd like you to consider everybody required to speak into a microphone like I'm doing now, because I can't hear anything, okay? And that's just a consideration for people who are disabled, all right? So even the Berksall guys, you knew they were going to be here, a microphone could have, could have been over there. The next question I have is, um, it's a little bit about the past. I'm a little bit unsure about the, the transparency here. Does anybody know which company actually pumped the water out of the streets of Belmar? Who?
Some, well, a few companies, primarily JH Reed and Mid-Atlantic.
Okay, I didn't see anything on JH Reed and Mid-Atlantic about water being pumped out, okay? Um, I didn't see a contract online, I didn't see anything like that. Um, the Broadco contract has de-watering contract written on it, okay? I called, pardon me if I'm being fuzzy, I called Broadco and they said that they originally pumped the water out. They did, right?
We have not paid Broadco for a dime because they...
I didn't ask you that. Who pumped the water out of the streets?
JH Reed and Mid-Atlantic.
According to Broadco, they pumped it out.
That's fair. That's fine.
Broadco was hired by who? Who hired them?
Borough of Belmar.
Who hired Broadco?
Borough of Belmar.
That's not correct, because I went to the Archdiocese of St. Rose and I found out that the Archdiocese has a contract with Broadco. Broadco was brought in by the Archdiocese of Trenton to pump out the water from, from St. Rose. It also gave the borough access to their generators and they used the generators, okay, throughout the entire thing. According to Broadco, they pumped the water out of the streets and out of Silver Lake back into the water. I talked to the general manager of Broadco and he claims they haven't been paid yet. Here's my question, why weren't they paid?
They failed to, they failed to provide the services that we contracted them for, so...
Well, how come there's no contract on the borough website with JH Reed or whoever else you're claiming to pump out water?
We did put it up. We put up everything we had, there were emergency contracts.
We put it up, can you get a copy?
There is no de-watering from JH Reed. I put an Oprah request in, actually Steve did, for the JH Reed contract for de-watering and there wasn't one. So, with, so before you answer, somebody's not being truthful about the water. Now, Broadco, I talked to them, they still believe that they did the job and they are still owed two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. If you'd like to see the Broadco contract, I have it right here. It says de-watering. It, JH Reed and the other company, there is no de-watering contract from the Borough of Belmar. So I don't know what you paid them for, but you didn't pay them to de-water, okay? The second question I have, okay, let me know when my five minutes is up, okay?
You got about forty-five seconds.
I also have here, from the borough website, it tells you who listed financial disclosure forms. I'm kind of wondering why Bill Young's financial disclosure form is not on here. Did he ever fill one out for two thousand twelve?
Um, I'll find out for you.
Anybody know he answered that one?
Everyone has.
And if he didn't, why didn't he and why isn't, is an issue? The other question I have is, on your financial disclosure form, M. Public Affairs is not listed as providing your wife with any income whatsoever. So is that true that she didn't receive any income from M. Public Affairs for two thousand twelve?
I'll take a look, but, um...
I have it here if you'd like to see it.
Oh, that's your five minutes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Charles Peters, two oh two Nineteenth Avenue, I'd like to thank you for doing a good job on the cleanup. First of all, my, uh, my second thought is on the spillway at Lake Como. Uh, they have these pumps crossing the roads and blocking everything up and gravity could do it for you. Uh, they should notch the road, put a little bridge over it and put it back to the way it was thirty years ago. They had big outflow pipes. We used to go swimming in that crummy water from the lake. And we had a good time back then. My, uh, other, I mean, just to relieve that problem, it's ridiculous, having pumps. My other, uh, question is concerning FEMA flood maps, and I had mentioned it to April, Silver Lake has no flood area around it.
Right.
And Lake Como is all flood area. And I know from the flood that Silver Lake went all the way over to Ninth and Tenth Avenue. And I don't know, are we getting a short end of the stick?
No, I'll, I'll tell you that the, the FEMA flood maps were added together before Hurricane Sandy. Uh, the, they, they did increase the, the flood area around, uh, Silver Lake and, uh, Brian, you can tell you who's...
I got flood removal plot, worst ever, right? Oh, my whole life, yes.
But I, I'd like to see something done with Lake Como, so we don't have to worry about it. This isn't the first time. It happened the year before too, to people in Lake. And it was, somebody changed that outflow pipe maybe twenty or so years ago and ever since then it's been bad. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Lou.
Oh, I'll be there in a minute.
You think that? Lou Neil, Fifteenth Avenue, each way check at Twenty-Fifth Avenue.
And you got it. Um, I know that the ramps, we never had a ramp at Twentieth and I was wondering if the ramps are going, I know that the zig and the zai, is it going to go to the north or is it going to go to the south?
I think they're all designed to go to the north.
Actually, they, they, first south and then you go to the north.
The only reason I'm saying that is because we have a very small beach, okay? Second question, I know that you have made the decision to extend the beach for another block.
The boardwalk, yes, sir.
The boardwalk, excuse me. Will we still have our concrete ramp for my customers that come out of Seventeenth, Eighteenth, Nineteenth and Twentieth Avenue with their big carts, which they bring down everything from their house? We still have that capability?
We're going to build, um, you remember up by Third Avenue?
Up and over.
It's going to be the same thing.
Okay, all right, because I do have some very nice people down there and they kind of look at me and say, hey Lou, what's going on, blah, blah, blah. But I was concerned about those two items and since the question has been asked, thank you.
Your one. Yes, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
I just gave an address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, I never did this stuff, I don't know. Uh, Jane Beilak, Eighth Avenue, Belmar. Uh, I hear so many complaints, but not enough compliments. Uh, I think our mayor does a fabulous job. Uh, many, many people here in the town really agree with me. Uh, he's very good to the seniors, uh, as well as young and all ages. And, you know, the council too is great, so I'd like to just express our opinion and reiterate that other people share my views. Thank you for all the good things you do, Mr. Mayor.
And Reed, One Hundred Ninth Avenue. Um, my question is to Councilman Bean, I heard, mentioned earlier on tonight about this, uh, dedicated street policing program.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, very, this, this sounds like a great program, sounds like very much like a community policing program I've been involved with in other places I've lived in. Could you tell me how like people like in my building, Ocean Harbor Apartments can, uh, to get ahold of the officer involved, or local businesses can get ahold of, and how we can, uh, meet with the, meet with the officer and discuss our issues?
Sure, what street is that on?
Yeah, 109th Avenue, Ocean Harbor Apartments.
109th Avenue, what's, what are your sites?
Yeah, Ocean, near the, 9th and Ocean.
9th. Sergeant Thomas Cox. I can give you, if you call the Police Department telephone number, section 518.
Okay.
Councilman Bean, Lieutenant Cox.
Oh.
The, it's on the website.
Okay. So that, so the way, so the way this works for all of us is to, is take a look at the list that you've put there, match it with the, with the officer and then contact the officer directly.
Email or phone.
Email, email or phone. Or like in, like in my case, if the super, if I mentioned this, the super, my building is super good contact, the officer will be able to send something up.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
I'm more than willing to help, I'll comment.
Yeah, this is, this is excellent. Because I found in the past, in buildings, that the officers come in like, looking for theft proofing, what to look over, what to watch for type of thing, so I think it's very worthwhile.
Yes, sir.
Hi.
She fucking lied right to my face. We didn't need hearing aids for that. But I wanted it on the record.
Hi, how are you? I'm Mary S. Warko, 1707 Snyder Avenue. Actually, this is more directed towards, and I like that idea of an officer per street. We've got the boardwalk going into place. We have bars opening up early. Do we have any idea how many residents are still displaced? And those homes are empty. And I'm concerned about parking. I'm concerned about people walking the streets and seeing the empty houses. Do we have a plan? This, this sounds wonderful. And I'm really concerned. I'm down by DJ's, three blocks from DJ's. Thank you. And I just think we're, I feel, I'm okay. I had 20 inches in my basement, which I lost a lot of utilities. But I'm really worried about the people who are not back in their homes. I see the town, I know we need revenue. But I want, I want us to be worried about the people, the taxpayers too. I know we need money coming in, but can we help the taxpayers? I know there's people on Surf Avenue who are nowhere near being back in their homes. And I'm feeling for them.
You're right. That's why we did the grant program. You know, we wish we could get out more money. But the best we can do is $5,000 grant for homeowners, $2,000 for renters. You know, we do have some homes. We're lucky, you know, the more I talk to mayors in other, other towns, they have a lot of homes that, you know, have to get knocked down. Most of ours can be repaired. But there are already some, particularly just south and east of you, that are tear downs. So we're working with those homeowners on getting it taken down. But at some point, if they don't, you know, it ends up becoming a health hazard for the residents and the Borough will have to take action. But we prefer to work with the homeowner as opposed to go in there and do the demolition ourselves.
Very good. Yes, it does. I see, this is the first time I'm actually trying to sell my property, even before Sandy. Because I would never bail out of town when it needed you. But I wanna go to Florida. I hate winters.
Would you?
Please. That boardwalk seems, FEMA has, seems to be putting a lot of laws in place for the residents. But yet, the boardwalk seems awfully low. That decking is low and there's no berm that was actually put in place? Did FEMA put anything in place for the boardwalk?
Well, the boardwalk's the same height. It's just the building's substantially better and some change made today. And we wanna put in those engineer degrees. FEMA is definitely opposed to it. It's just, they're very bureaucratic and that comes out of a separate pool of money. But one thing, and I could fully understand frustration of residents. FEMA is much more generous to government entities than they are to residents.
Really? And who, and who do they need to be generous to? We're residents. We're paying taxes every day.
They'll, they'll replace moral halls, they'll replace police stations, they'll replace all that, but they won't replace me.
And another thing, I have a Christmas tree in front of Bradley Beach. That was a wonderful idea. Do you remember that, about 18, 15, 18 years ago? They said, bring your Christmas trees. They put the dune line. Now, their dune is high, too high for my preference. I'm a jogger and you can't see the ocean. But, and now I believe Ocean Grove is putting a dune line. Did they do that as well?
Yes.
That, a nice little dune line would be, with Christmas trees, was a wonderful thing.
Thank you.
We'll get you back right after that.
Joan Zook is through 310th Avenue. I was just asking about the boardwalk, the color. Is it gonna be really, really hot in the summer? Is it temperature controlled? No, because it's really dark.
It's brown as opposed to gray. And our explanation from the manufacturer, would it be warmer? They, they say that if the gray was, say, you know, 96 degrees, the brown would be 98. So it's not gonna be noticeable.
No, because my sister has a deck on her house and it is hot. And I'm just wondering if...
If you remember walking barefoot during the day on that, it was, I mean, either one.
I can't imagine it being, yeah, like darker, I would think would be hotter.
They're, they're saying it doesn't, you know, nothing, nothing goes. We'll find out.
Okay, thanks.
Where's Sandy's? Foot pops. Yes, Mayor.
David Schneid through 2C Street. Two quick questions. Any word from FEMA yet on our money? Did we get anything yet?
Well, FEMA already released $4.2 million to the state of New Jersey, Officer Rivers and that. Out of that, the state's released $2 million, we're still waiting on the other $2.2 million.
So the state released $2, $2 million to us?
Right. They're holding on to $2.2 million of our money that we're fighting for and there's no reason for you to hold it.
Is that, is that towards the boardwalk or other bills to?
That's clear.
To debris cleanup? Okay, no, no word on the boardwalk replenishment?
You can't do it until we're done.
Okay, the other thing is, you know, and I've written about this, the Assembly Democrats, led by Assemblyman Peter Barnes, wanna have a state Assembly Coastal Planning Commission that's gonna come up with a coastal plan that's gonna supersede all county and local and, you know, planning. I was wondering if you're aware of that and what your thoughts were on that?
I am aware of it. I actually know someone in Barnes personally. Very, very smart man, good man. But I could not agree disagree far with that.
Good, thank you.
Local control.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, they should not be telling us what to build here. Okay, thank you.
Jill Corano, A Street. Beach replenishment. There was an article in the paper this week, federal money might be released. Are any, any dates, times, are we getting sand?
Good, good thing for us is Belmar was on the list for beach replenishment prior to Sandy. But there was no funding for it. So the large package that finally passed Congress after way too long included money for beach replenishment for people that were already on the list. So the question is, when are they gonna do it? It's already March 13th. You know, if they tell us they wanna start, you know, July 1st, it doesn't make a lot of sense. So my guess is, and this is a guess, it'll happen sometime this fall. But we're, we're already in, we're in good shape to get it, we will get it.
All right, what is going to be in front of our boardwalk? Are we gonna make a little sand dune? Are we putting anything there? Because the seawall seems to be out to sea.
I thought out to sea, it's just...
I know, it's delayed, it's whatever. So what is gonna be in front of the new boardwalk besides just flat sand?
Well, sort of like last time, we'll put back those small dunes. You know, they, you know, depending on the, on the storm surge, it doesn't matter where you put them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Mark Pfeifer, 319 Fifth Avenue. Understanding this is a low priority, but for lifting your spirits and that, is there a timeline for Silver Lake and getting the path put back in and grass and things like that?
Excellent question.
Absolutely, we have a, we're prepared to go out and bid. The funding for that project is actually in the ordinance that we produce tonight. So as soon as we have that final adoption and approval, we can go about awarding it. But I would expect us to go out and bid in the next three weeks, I'm gonna say, to get that done. It's gonna finish the grading, bring back the center path and fix the outflow pipe.
Great. Thank you.
How about lighting?
There will be lighting. Put back around that now. Yes, sir.
Gene Kramer, 4th Avenue. I've been developing a list of good things that resulted from a post-tropical storm, Sandy. One of them, actually, this was a subject maybe about a year ago now, where actually Sandy proved to be the most successful smoke test we've ever had in town. As you know, there's, property owners have illicit connections or otherwise illegally discharged to the, to the borough's sanitary sewer system. Well, a lot of those people ended up with turns in toilet paper in their basement. Just doesn't get any better than that.
Yes, Judy.
I also wanna thank you for putting the community police in order.
Just name the address for the record, please.
Again, Judy Kulik, K-U-L-I-K, 112 17th Avenue. I think our officer is gonna have to work overtime. As I have another concern that now that that executive order was put into place and we, I don't know when DJ's is planning to open, what dates or what he's not gonna open. But now that other businesses are thinking about opening or requesting to open, our Jersey barrier says residents only and the establishments are between 16th and 17th. I'm concerned about where the people are going to park, since it's supposed to be residents only or, you know, it's crazy as it is to try and make the U-turn when you live there. Also, I'm glad that the parade mostly went well for everyone. However, in front of our home, when we were sitting having our corned beef and cabbage dinner, people were making their way down to the oceanfront, which was open that day, and decided to prance on top of my brother's hood of his car, ready to go onto the convertible tops. So I think it's a proactive thing to have the community policing. But if, if these other places are going to be open and people are going to be flocking that way, we better think about it ahead of time instead of reacting. We have to be proactive and that's a great idea. But if you're gonna say yes, then other plans have to be put in to protect the residents. Because it is very creepy down there now without any lighting in the evening with these barriers. It's just strange and without people returning yet, all the, you know, cleanup is still going on. So I just want you to think a little bit about we who live right there, like four houses away from these places. Thanks.
Yes, Mike. Are you taking me from Maria Florio?
Yeah, he said no to me. And Mike?
Mike Sebeck, 110 Second Avenue. Councilman McGovern, I think the committee, the committee's work is very important. I wish, personally, the committee was a little more open. But if you're responsible for changing those lives, thank God. I thought the previous light selection was not appropriate for the town. And I heard from a lot of other people likewise. The other question I had was during the Ashbrit questions that, in the Senate hearings recently. It brought together a question I had regarding how the council dealt with contracts and the like during the early days of the storm. And my question is, Council President Dikey, could you tell me when Mayor Doherty advised you of this conflict on the Ashbrit contract?
I didn't see, I didn't think that he had one.
So he didn't advise you of that?
Well, I can say, I advised her as I advised the entire council at whatever council meeting we had. Everyone was told at the same time.
Not the November 7th council meeting? What council meeting are you referring to, Mayor Doherty?
Whatever council meeting we had, a vote on Ashbrit.
On Ashbrit. So prior to that, there was no disclosure of any contract? Because under the Belmar's administrative code, as a result of the conflict, Council President Dikey would be the supervisory council member. And I think she probably should've been advised. Because at that November 7th council meeting, I just reviewed it, our administrator, Bill Young, had tendered his resignation on the 5th for two weeks. And the Ashbrit contract was signed on the 8th. And again, it gets back to communication and transparency. I was wondering what communication was going on between the council members regarding these very significant, very important and very expensive contracts?
I don't imagine there was a whole lot of communication, you know. I know a council member, Nicolay, was running the volunteer effort. I know Council, Council President Dikey was here as well with the volunteers. So was Councilman McGovern. You know, our business administrator was managing that along with our DPW director. There was no, there were no public meetings.
But the business administrator is not an elected official? So at the end of the day, one of the council members would have oversight over a department head, isn't that?
No.
Doesn't work that way?
No, I'll take a look, no.
Well, the Borough Code seems to...
In our government, the council does not oversee any departments.
The council oversees all the departments. You...
Council oversees the budget.
Excuse me, I stand corrected. Perhaps the mayor oversees all the departments.
Correct.
But the point is, you had a conflict, Mayor Doherty, and should've advised Council President Dikey of her need to act as supervisor.
I appreciate your opinion that I should've advised.
Okay. The other question I have for you, Council, excuse me, Mayor Doherty. Did you repay Ferrera $2,600 for campaign contribution?
No.
You did not?
No.
Did any entity, like a campaign or the Democratic Committee or anybody like that pay? Because there was a conflict with Ferrera, correct? And they had to do it on pay-to-play ordinance?
No, under a state of emergency, pay-to-play rules are suspended.
Pay-to-play rules are suspended under a state of emergency?
Correct.
I was unaware of that, so...
I heard something new every day.
Yeah, I definitely agree. Councilman McGovern, I look forward to attending your meetings regarding other, things regarding the boardwalk?
Next Thursday at 7 o'clock in this room.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
Other questions, yes?
Yes, who?
Yes, you.
Yes, you? Okay, Maria Florio. I got big mouth. 115 12th Avenue. I'd like to know, when is A Street going to become one-way again? No, they're using it since the storm as a two-way. And there's all those signs, one-way, one-way. Come and sit on my deck and they go, right? Anybody on A?
Okay, just address the council.
Right?
We'll, we'll have our police department address it, ensure that everyone is driving one-way on A.
I know that they let in the beginning because we couldn't go down to the ocean, they were using it.
I don't think it was ever...
Oh, well, well, then, our police doing their job. I don't think so. Put me there, okay?
Talk to you later, guys. Other questions, comments? Think more.
Tom Dilbert, 100 River Road. When you just mentioned about the councilwoman Nicolay and Claire and Brian working, you failed to mention Councilman Bean. He had a gang and he was working, breaking up the boardwalk, the sections that flowed up to 8th Avenue out of Silver Lake. And he, well, he did. And he was running his truck and using his tools and putting his hands on the work. So you failed to mention that.
Thank you for bringing in my bench.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Tom.
Leanne Kulik, 112 17th Avenue as well. You've heard from my mom twice today. I just wanted to voice my concern as well, because I actually do live there, like, on a day-to-day basis opposed to my parents. And I live there with my brother, and we're both young, we're both college students. And it is, it's kind of an eerie situation right now, where like the people who usually rent to winter residence did not get anybody, obviously, to rent for the winter. So it's very, like, we are just alone in an island with maybe like one or two other people actually living on our street, on our block right now. So it is a little bit scary. So I, and I've experienced over the summers, like, the craziness that goes on when it come, when bars open and the stuff that happens in, like, light, where there actually is light. So in the darkness that we're, like, living in now, and the emptiness that we're living in now, I get really concerned, because I know that I've, we've had people, like, knocking on our door or sleeping on our porches, like, when there was actually light there. So now, I do have some concern about it, and I appreciate that the community policing is starting to happen and that there is proactive stuff. But I really do want to put extra concern on the fact that there are very few people there right now, and there's very little light. And I know that it was an executive order, and I know that you guys don't have much to do with that, obviously. But I just wanted to say that, because, you know, I know that Dolce Vita and 10th Avenue Burrito, obviously, it was really important for them, because they did have a lot of business that was lost due to the storm. But DJ's was not, is not open during the winter, so they didn't lose any business. So they're just adding business to their, by, by getting that executive order, they're just adding to it. And it is concerning for me, because I know that the damage is done on a yearly basis to our community during the winter, during the summer. So now, during this, like, March 2, whenever, I'm, I'm concerned about it as well. So I just wanted to make that concern aware. Thanks.
Brendan Reed, 109th Avenue. I just want to follow up on the concerns on the lighting. Just have a question. Would it be possible to have temporary lighting at locations like near where the Kuliks live? And also likely, it was during St. Patrick's Day, where you live near the 711, you're where I live, until the permanent lighting is put in place?
We will certainly have a plan in place, you know. I wish we had a guarantee that the lighting would be up and ready. Since we don't, we will, we'll have a plan made.
Okay, so you will look at something like what we had for St. Patrick's Day with, with the, with the temporary lighting, just so that you can handle the issues that...
Aesthetic pleasing, but it'll, it'll do the job.
Yeah, and those, and that lighting was great, by the way. It made quite a bitter difference and, you know, helped make the parade and the weekend successful.
Yes, Cap?
Very epic construction, also off their lights as we open Ocean Avenue. Because they don't use them at nighttime, we can use them in the generators, just like we did for the road in St. Patrick's Day.
Well, it's 9 o'clock, friends. Tell me about them. Hallie, by the way, Hallie, the reporter from the CoStar, has been here with a migraine all night. Let's hear it again.